Hi there, I'm Catherine. I just want to second what Juliette just said about our families of heritage of Arab descent, Muslims, Palestinians, and that connects with the OFI position that I know is so desperately needed in our schools to keep families engaged. So I implore you to do everything you can to keep those positions. And tonight I have a poem by Mosab Abutoha, who is an academic Palestinian living in Syracuse and was supposed to be coming to Berkeley, but because of the current climate has had to cancel because of ice. Every child in Gaza is me. Every mother and father is me. Every house is my heart. Every tree is my leg. Every plant is my arm. Every flower is my eye. Every hole in the earth is my wound. We need to keep teaching Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Yasmeer N., followed by Jamie T.
Good evening, distinguished board. Thank you for having us up here today. I've appreciated listening to the update videos and understand that y'all are doing everything you can. I would like to share that even when and if funding is found, the impact has already rippled through our community. The psychological toll and uncertainty of being told that one should look for greener pastures eats into our daily conversations, and no amount of reassurances from those of us who've been through it is enough. I urge you to keep in mind this in the future when we find ourselves at similar crossroads. And as partners in education, I hope that when and if you find soft funding, that you please let us know as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And then finally, we'll have Jamie T. Jamie? Okay. Well, that concludes all of our cards that are green that requested to speak this evening. And so thank you all so much for your public comments to the Board of Education. And I am happy that we were able to do it within the allowed at time. At this time, we will move on to our committee. Excuse me. Oh, we're online. Great. All right. Can you do me a favor? Since I'm not able to access Zoom on here, can you please call the... Okay. Our first student speaker is being promoted on Zoom. Okay, they declined participation to speak. So now we will move on to our next speaker, who is... Hello, Ms. Sepega. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Sagrario Sepeda. I'm the mother of Nathan in eighth grade and Vanessa in 12th grade, who is in Bridge. I'm here tonight to thank you the board and the district for supporting the Berkeley High School Bridge program. We know that the district has to make large budget cuts this year. We also know that the district cares about equity. And we know each year, the number of African American and Latinx students who are four-year college eligible is extremely low. Yet, for the last 15 years, Bridge had almost had 100% four-year college acceptance rate for the Latinx community and African American students. This year, 80 incoming ninth graders asked to be part of the bridge, including my son. This program will be 50 of these kids are on the waiting list. If Bridge funding remains the same next year as it is now, we can take the students on a waiting list, and it will be graduating in two cohorts this year. We can bring it to two cohorts the next year as well. If we want the chance to... These mild results for the Latinx and African American students, we need to invest in the Bridge program, even when there are serious budgets, and we know that it's coming. We implore you not to make these cuts in the program. Every dollar we put in the bridge affirms our commitment to equity and makes a difference. And I know that my time is over, but I just have wonderful things about the Bridge program, because my daughter is graduating, and she's going to college with all the Bridge kids that are in the program right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next public commenter? Okay. We have one more student who we're going to try one more time. Hello, welcome. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Crubel B. Monroe. I'm a senior in Berkeley High, and I just want to talk about how the Bridge program has supported me all throughout high school. Joining Bridge in the ninth grade helped me build a strong academic foundation. I've had countless opportunities being in Bridge. My Bridge teacher, Mr. Benlos, introduced me to dual enrollment classes, helped me get internships, and also my first job for the city of Berkeley. Ms. Hammond's support with the college application process was beyond helpful, helping us fill out our college apps, getting us essay readers, and helping us with financial aid. Some of the big schools I got into were UCLA, UC Berkeley, and USC. According to Data Quest, the California data website, 110 African American seniors graduate from Berkeley High, and only 23 are A through G eligible, 15 of whom were Bridge kids. I know how much Bridge has positively impacted me and other students of color, striving for us to go to a four-year university. Please don't cut the budget for Bridge. I know that there are 59th graders on the waitlist right now, and I want them to have the same opportunity I received, so they could do well too.
Thank you for your comments, and congratulations on all of your college acceptances. I know you cannot hear it, but you have a rousing applause here in the boardroom. We are so very proud of you. Congratulations. Our next public commenter? Oh, that is it for online. Okay. Thank you to all of those who came out to speak, and to those who were patient and waited on Zoom to be able to speak. We will now move on to our committee comments. And if you are here to make a committee comment, I'll ask that you please come to the microphone at this time. I know for a fact that there are committee comments that we are receiving tonight from the African American Advisory Committee, and so we will begin with those comments. And so I see Pilar, who is making her way to the podium. And if there are any other committee comments, I'll ask that you will please line up behind Pilar.
Okay. Good evening, Board Directors, Superintendent, and Berkeley community. My name is Pilar Fisher, and I come before you tonight as a proud and active BUSD parent and a dedicated member of the superintendent's African American Success Advisory Committee, also known as ASAC. I have a thriving seventh grader at Longfellow and also a thriving 10th grader at Berkeley High. Our family has been a part of this community since the start of their educational journey. So I know firsthand how critical life's transitions can be, not just for our students, but also for the parents and caregivers. Even as someone who is deeply involved, as myself, I continue to be surprised on how much I don't know about all the resources available to support our students. That's one of the main reasons why I joined ASAC, not just to advocate for my own children, but to also advocate for the many students and families who may not have the capacity to be as involved. Families who are surviving, working long hours, and still do their best to show up for their children in every way they can. I want to personally invite you all to the annual BUSD African American Success Framework Transition Fairs, Saturday, April 19, in the Donahue Gym at Berkeley High, for the students transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade, very important. Also, Saturday, April 26, at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, for the students transitioning from fifth to sixth grade. Both events begin at 10:00 a.m., and it should last till about 11:30. These fairs were born out of the African American Success Framework Strategic Action, specifically in response to the families who shared during community focus groups, parents and caregivers. There were too many students that were slipping through the cracks, especially in the transitions between middle school to high school. So these fairs are one concrete response to those calls, a way to make those invisible gaps visible, and to close them with care, connection, and community. They are more than just helpful, they are essential. These events give families a chance to see around the corner, to ease the stress in transitions, to build a sense of belonging. Parents get to meet each other, ask questions, grow their support networks, and students get to gain confidence, access information, and begin to feel like they belong before they even walk into the new school. We also recognize that we're in a season of stormy weather. We are very aware of the budget decisions and the difficult priorities ahead. But in the midst of these challenges, we must keep our eyes on the prize, making sure that our students and families, especially our vulnerable population, have what they need to succeed in this district. So tonight, I'm asking you, our Board of Education, to continue to support these critical transition efforts. They are aligned with the very foundation of the African American Success Framework, and are clear examples of what it looks like to listen, respond, and act with equity at the center. A heartfelt thank you to all of the BUSD staff, community-based organizations, and partners who are working behind the scenes to make these fairs meaningful and accessible. This work is serious, and these transitions do matter. I know firsthand. It's very difficult. And your continued support is not only deeply appreciated, but it is essential. Our students and families are counting on your leadership to ensure that they don't just make it through these transitions, but that they thrive. We want our babies to thrive. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you all there, or as many as can be present. Again, real quick, again, that's Saturday, April 19, for transitioning to high school, and then Saturday, April 26, at Martin Luther King Middle School for fifth to sixth grade. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Pilar. Are there any other folks who are here for committee comments? This is your time to speak? Okay, seeing none. We will now move on to our union comments. We will receive our union comments in this order, BFT, BCC-E, YUBA, and Local 21. Ms. Sharis, do we have any comments online from BFT? No. Do we have any comments this evening from BCC-E? Any comments from YUBA? Or from Local 21? Okay. Hearing none, we will now move on to our board member comments. Are there any board members who would like to begin? All right, Director Korn, would you like to go? Wonderful. Following Director Korn, we will move to Student Director Clark.
Okay. Hi. All right. First, I want to acknowledge all of the children, parents, and staff who came out to speak tonight about the impact of possible layoff notices. I have great empathy for the uncertainty and stress that these notices cause, both for the employees who are directly impacted, and also for the students and families who benefit every day from our employees' work. I want you all to know that I'm deeply grateful for BUSD's hard-working employees, including counselors. My own son's counselor is here in the room. OFI and Learn staff, thank you to the Learn staff I've worked with over the years. elective teachers and our cooking and gardening teachers. And I want to remind everyone that final staffing decisions will depend on many budgetary factors that are not yet fully clear, and decisions that are yet to be made. There are going to be some important presentations tonight about all of these issues. And I'm grateful that the superintendent and her staff will be talking to us about budget balancing in general and layoffs specifically. If you're unable to stay for those presentations, I urge you to watch the recordings that will be posted online. I also want to invite everyone to attend the superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee meetings to continue to learn about all the budgetary considerations being weighed, and to advocate for your school communities. The next meeting will be held on April 16. Everyone is welcome to attend online. These important meetings are the place where budgetary recommendations are hashed out in advance of coming to the board for a vote. I urge everyone here to stay engaged as we move through this difficult budget and staffing decision-making season. And I also want to take a moment tonight to thank everyone who came out in acknowledgement of Arab American and Swana, South Asian, Southwest Asian, and North African Heritage Month here in BUSD. This is a month when we recognize and uplift our diverse Arab American and Swana community here in Berkeley. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I took some time this afternoon to explore the district webpage with resources for families and educators, which includes profiles of some of our Arab American and Swana educators here in BUSD, including Christina Hart. Thank you so much. I was really moved by these staff profiles. They highlight joyful cultural celebrations. They highlight Arab culture's generosity and hospitality, the vital role that Arab American and Swana staff members play in our school communities. And at the same time, these staff profiles include reflections on the targeting of Arab Americans after 9/11, and stories of ancestors and family members who've been killed and displaced by war. So as we joyfully honor Arab American and Swana members of our community this April, it's clear to me the importance of simultaneously acknowledging the pain that many are experiencing as their family members in Yemen, Gaza, and elsewhere continue to be in grave danger. Tens of thousands of people have been killed in Gaza over the past 18 months, and in a global community like ours here in Berkeley, these deaths directly impact many of our students, families, and staff. And the recent arrests of student anti-war activists like Mahmoud Khalil and Ramisa Ozturk, combined with today's news that 19 members of the UC Berkeley community have had their visas revoked, are chilling evidence of an escalating attack on free speech and academic freedom that is explicitly targeting Arab Americans. So I want to take this opportunity, in honor of Arab American and Swana Heritage Month, to do three things. One, encourage families and educators to access the resources provided by the district to uplift and celebrate our beautiful and diverse Arab American and Swana community here in BUSD. Two, reaffirm BUSD's stance against Islamophobia and all forms of hate this month and every day. And three, reiterate my commitment to free speech and academic freedom, a core value here in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you for those beautiful, beautiful comments, Director Korn. We are actually going to go to Director Shinaski next.
Okay, well, I'm gonna jump right off of that. I also want to acknowledge all the budget cuts and the really difficult decisions that are having to be made, and point out the budget cuts wouldn't be necessary if we'd stop funding war in this country, and we'd start funding education. Specifically, I also want to acknowledge celebration of Arab American Swana Heritage Month. I'm proud of the resolution we passed last year, and I want to acknowledge the continued and ongoing othering, war, and murder of Arab people in Gaza, Yemen, and elsewhere. I want to speak up for Mahmoud Khalil in solidarity and support, and all students and faculty here in Berkeley and around the country. And I specifically want to call out Appendix 3 of our BFT contract, which actually identifies academic freedom for the faculty in our district, because it's quite special. It's quite unique. As a college professor, I'm used to academic freedom. But here in Berkeley, we honor that academic freedom for our K-12 instructors. And that appendix says in part, "That the controversial nature of a subject shall not bar its discussion in schools. In the interest of the freedom to teach, all employees shall be encouraged to express all views, including their own, honestly and in good faith. To this end, the board," that's us, "will provide a teaching and learning atmosphere free from unreasonable censorship and artificial restraint upon free inquiry, learning, and academic freedom." I just want to point out a couple of other quick things that are coming up. Well, tomorrow, I will be holding my office hours, so I hope you will come and visit me from 3:00 to 5:00 at Casa Latina. And on April 15, we have a community meeting about the needs of our Berkeley High School CTE classes, tennis teams, softball, baseball, and the neighbors surrounding Mullering Field. So I hope folks will come and stand in support for those projects. And finally, I want to give a huge shout out and congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, especially those who are seeing all the results, the fruition of their hard work, as they're getting all these acceptances to wonderful schools and making decisions about their next four years. Thanks.
We'll come back to you when you're ready. Are you ready? Okay. We'll go to Director Vasudev, and followed by Vice President Chang, and then I will end with Student Director Clark.
Great. My comment's really brief tonight. I'm not feeling very well tonight, but I just wanted to echo a lot of what was expressed by Directors Korn and Shinaski. Also, just acknowledge how very difficult these budgetary conversations are. And even though it's a process, and we have to follow all these different rules, and provide notices, I do want to acknowledge just the emotional toll that this is taking on our staff. And it's very disheartening for me to just hear just what it's like to have this looming on you right now, as you're thinking about your own futures, and we're not giving you very clear answers right now at this stage in the budget. So I just want to acknowledge that, and I hear you, and it's terrible, and I'm sorry that this is the process. But as we learn, and whatever we can do to be as transparent as we can, I think we're trying to do as a board, and I know that the superintendent is trying to as well in her frequent communications with our community. I just want to give a shout out to our robotics students. I was able to see both our JV, and I didn't know we had a JV team. This is very exciting. It's very new at Berkeley High. We have a JV and a varsity robotics team. And I got to visit them over the weekend at the first California robotics competition at VHS. And so I just wanted to thank them for an excellent job during the competition, but also just their public speaking skills as they were giving me a tour and showing me how their robot worked. So shout out to Berkeley High and all the students that put in a lot of work to prepare over the break for this amazing competition. And I look forward to the discussion on the budget tonight, and continuing to meet with folks. If you want to grab coffee, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to meet up with folks that are concerned and worried, and to support you in any way that I can. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Vice President Chang.
Thank you so much, President. Thank you for, again, bringing your hearts and minds and exercising your right to assembly and speech to this space. Congratulations again to all of our VHS students for their college opportunities, including our Student Board Director. Congratulations. Exciting, and looking forward to your great work in the future as well. Good luck. Much appreciation. And again, as other board members have stated, somber reflection, and celebration for Arab American and Swana heritage during these very challenging times. As my board members have reflected, or colleagues have reflected, we have deep respect for the service of our teachers and staff that you provide to this district. Your hard work and effort is what makes this district run. And I think that is a through line for our budget process. Thank you, students, parents, teachers, staff, for your support, again, for teachers, counselors, for teaching controversial issues, local control, and reminding us again to focus on student-centered services during this challenging budget season. The past weeks have been a roller coaster for all of us. I want to raise very briefly in this context, and raise up the practice, and hold it up, the practice of holding the line, which our superintendent has reflected in her messaging. Both holding the line and the principle of local control. Even with the hollowing out of due process infrastructure across this country, BUSD will continue to provide non-disrupted programs and services in a fair and inclusive manner that reflects Berkeley values. Thank you. That's what I want to leave it with. And thank you so much for coming again. Thanks again. I'm gonna turn it over to...
Me.
The President.
Thank you. Vice President Chang, Student Director Clark.
Good evening, everybody, and I hope you all had a wonderful, and for the students, restful spring break, and happy National Arab American History Month. It's great to see so many familiar faces here at tonight's board meeting, and I truly appreciate it hearing from everyone who spoke, especially the little ones. And I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you who shared your voice tonight. I truly stand with the concerns you're bringing forward. This district has played such a big role in shaping the person who I am today, and that includes the incredible staff, many of whom who are here tonight. So I wanted to say thank you to all the BUSD teachers for everything you've done. I stand with you during this incredibly difficult time of budget cuts, and I see your dedication and strength. I also wanted to say that as a student who's taken ethnic studies at Berkeley High, I can say firsthand that it was a transformative experience. It was a liberating course that challenged us to think critically about the world we live in. And I believe that keeping our curriculum honest and inclusive allows students to develop the skills to question misinformation, especially around important and gruesome global events like the genocide in Palestine. And I also wanted to uplift a program that was mentioned earlier during public comment, the Bridge program, which I've been a part of since my freshman year, and I honestly don't think I would have made it through high school if it weren't for the support that they gave me. And honestly, I probably wouldn't even be sitting here today as a Student Board Director if it weren't for Bridge. Given that the college application process was very overwhelming with their guidance, I can proudly say that I'm heading to college this fall as a first-generation student with options like Cornell, Spelman, and Fordham, which means everything to me. So I'm gonna keep the rest of my comments short. Prom this year was held at San Francisco City Hall, and it was such a beautiful night. It was amazing to see everyone enjoy themselves, and the superintendent was there. So it was so lovely having you there. You looked amazing. And finally, to our seniors, college decisions are finally out, and so I just wanted to say how proud I am of all of you. Wherever you're headed, please know that you're going to be okay, and congratulations on closing such a big chapter in your life. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Student Director Clark, we were clapping a little bit, and so some folks may not have heard the colleges that you've been accepted to, and that you have the wonderful opportunity to decide where you're going to go. So I'm gonna ask that you just read those one more time, so that everyone can hear.
Okay, I only said three, but I said Cornell.
Say them all.
I don't think I know them all. I'll just emphasize my top three choices, which are Cornell, Spelman, and Fordham.
And we know that whichever school you choose, although I'm hoping you choose Spelman, whichever school you choose will be absolutely better because they have you as a student enrolled. And so we're so very, very proud of you, as well as all of your Berkeley High School senior colleagues and peers who are getting ready to make an amazing mark on the world. So congratulations, Winter. Good evening again, everyone. Thank you to those who spoke tonight to the Board of Education in regards to the layoffs and the impacts that those are having on our school district, as well as budget cuts. Thank you to those who spoke about protecting our rights and the need to fight, fight, and continue to fight. Those who spoke tonight about the importance of centering and continuing to teach Palestine, and those who spoke tonight in support of and celebrating the Bridge program and all of the phenomenal things that the Bridge program has done for our students. I want to thank my board colleagues again for those beautiful, beautiful comments tonight, honoring so many things, but really honoring, taking the time to honor and celebrate Arab American Heritage and Swana Month. And so happy Arab American Heritage and Swana Month to all of you all. My board colleague, Director Korn, shared my exact sentiments, and so I will just say that I'm very proud to be a part of a Board of Education who passed a resolution last year to honor, to celebrate, and to center the lives of our Arab and Swana students, our community members, and beyond. And this would not have been possible. We cannot really take any credit for that, because this would not have been possible without our active community members of advocates who called upon the board, who pushed upon the board, and who advocated that the board... the board, and who advocated that the board do what is right and do what is needed. However, there is still work that needs to be done to, one, raise awareness, two, to heal and offer to support to those who are continually impacted by the effects of the war. And there is still more that needs to be done to be able to teach Palestine with the freeness and with the comfort that it deserves. And so thank you to those who continue to come to the board meeting and advocate time and time again, and for allowing us to put our, our values in the forefront and pushing on us as a board to stand up for what we believe in, despite how scary it may be, despite those who come at us. It is important that we do what is right. It is always the time to do and to say what is right, when it's right to do it. I will make it quick, but since the last time we were together, I had the pleasure of attending the California Association of African American Superintendents and Administrators along with a couple of our BUSD staff members, including our superintendent. And we had such a phenomenal time, listening, learning, growing, and figuring out the best ways to advocate for our Black and African American students, as Pilar really called on us to do earlier this, this evening with her board comments on behalf of the African American Success Framework Advisory Committee. That conference is an annual conference that happens every year, which brings together some powerhouse superintendents, some powerhouse board members, powerhouse teachers, and even powerhouse parents who are advocating for, for fully funded education for all, but a fully funded education that centers the needs of Black students. And so it was wonderful to be able to attend, and I'm excited to take all that I learned at that conference and bring it right back here to Berkeley Unified School District. Also, since the last time we were together, I chaired and participated along with Director Shinoski in our first two-by-two committee meeting of the year. And our two-by-two committee meeting is where we partner and work with two of our city council representatives to deal with issues that impact both the school district and the city, to figure out the best way that we can come together to work on those issues. So at that meeting, we were able to have a timely and critical conversation and received an update about Craigmont Elementary School traffic safety, as well as Longfellow Middle School traffic safety. And I'd like to take this time to give my appreciation to the staff from the city of Berkeley, as well as our Associate Superintendent Kalis and his team for their ongoing work and for your partnership to work together to make sure that our, our schools are safe places for our students to, to go every single day. And I'd like to also thank our community members who emailed us and spoke out during the board meeting and who came to the two-by-two committee meeting to advocate for both of those issues. Unfortunately, we had one other item, which was student safety around homelessness encampments near school sites that we didn't get a chance to get to because of time restraints. But we are ensuring that that is our first item of business during our next two-by-two committee. And so thank you again to those community advocates who emailed the Board of Education because that really helps us to be able to advocate and give feedback and to push and to partner with our city partners to make sure that we get the work done. That is it for me. So I will pass it over to our superintendent for her comments this evening.
Good evening, BUSD family. So let me tell y'all something. So for the last couple of months, I've been speaking first. Y'all knew that. And tonight, they switched it up. So not only did public comments and committee comments go, then the board spoke. So I'm looking at my notes like, what am I going to say? Because they said most of it all, but I'm going to work with me, okay?
And Superintendent, if I can just add, that is actually the past practice that we've had, where the superintendent does come after the Board of Education. And so we are adopting that practice again. So thank you so much for being so flexible.
I have things to share.
Wow, we love you.
We love you. So what they didn't say, first of all, welcome back. I hope you all had a wonderful spring break. I hope you are, welcome back. I hope you all had a wonderful spring break and that you are back rested, restored, and rejuvenated and can, ready to continue the amazing work that happens here in BUSD. So I'm going to just have to go through my notes and see what everybody else said. I do want to say that in a time where many folks, where many leaders, many districts, and many organizations are changing their tune and ducking and dodging, I am so glad and proud to be Superintendent of Berkeley Unified School District that remains steadfast and committed to celebrating our beautiful diversity and proudly recognizing and lifting the voices, experiences, and rich histories and contributions of Arab American, South Asian, Southwest Asian, North African Swana heritage folks in our district and beyond. So happy Arab American, Southeast Asian, Southwest Asian, North African Swana Heritage Month, y'all. We celebrate the diversity of this community, not just in the month of April, but every day. And I think it's important that now and every day, we stay committed to doing so, really recognizing the contributions of this community and how it adds to the strength of who we are, not just as Berkeley or BUSD, but as a country, a nation, and a world. Already heard all the comments about what's going on in our world, particularly in Palestine and Gaza, and our commitment to not just ongoing academic freedom, but the ability to teach controversial issues. So what I will add is that Director Chang definitely referenced it, but I hope you all read my March 26 message to the community. And in that communication, I asked, how do we stay steady and ready to support our children when students and staff are receiving a barrage of misleading and disrupting information that can distract and, in my opinion, is meant to divide us from our core mission? How do we acknowledge with heartbreak and outrage that some, that many, that most of us in this community, especially those that are most vulnerable, are feeling much more off balance than usual, when folks in our community here and abroad are afraid and feel our government is crossing the line? How do we do that, BUSD? We do it by holding the line. Can y'all say, we hold the line? We hold the line here in BUSD when we continue to stay the course despite what is going on. We must continue to uplift all of our community, our diverse community, and continue to stand up against all forms of hate and reject all discrimination based on race, ethnicity, culture, religion, gender, gender identity and expression, immigration status, disability, and sexual orientation. Regardless of what is going on around us, our policies have not changed. I'm going to say that again. Regardless of what is going on around us in BUSD, our policies have not changed. We continue to believe our students have the right to learn about diverse topics and that our educators have the right and are ready and skilled and compassionate enough to teach them all about the various things that are going on here and abroad. We have been and we will continue to hold the line in BUSD. One more time, we hold the line. BUSD also is observing, not just Arab American Swana Month, but March 21st to April 10th is Caesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta commemorative period in celebration of the rich histories of the Chicano, Chicana, Chicana X, Filipina, Filipino, Filipina X, and Latina, Latino, Latina X, they didn't say that, communities in our schools. As such, the district invites our community to Solidarity Across Generations: Fields of Unity, which is an event held in partnership with various community organizations. That's actually happening tomorrow, April 10th at 4:30. Did somebody say that? April 10th at, I'm sorry, April 10th at 4:30 PM in the Berkeley City College Auditorium. Staff and families receive information about how to RSVP some time ago. Please make sure you RSVP, and hopefully you will all attend. Consistent with our commitment to transparency, tonight on this evening's agenda, we do have a budget balancing update, as well as information and an update regarding the March 15 notices that many of you came and spoke about. As you heard one public commenter speak and share, I have been making videos and trying to share as best as I can information to keep you all up to date on what is going on, not only with the process, but where we are with the March 15 notices. I do hope that folks stay because tonight, we're not going to only give an update on the March 15 notices and the budget balancing process, but really try to shed some light, address some misinformation and some confusion around the notices, why they are, what they are, and what they are not, and our work to really move as quickly as possible to rescind as many of them as soon as possible. So y'all staying? Okay. All right. Exactly. You already heard, you already heard Pilar talk about the transition fairs. Please, again, if you did not hear, it's also on our website. We have our eighth to ninth grade transition fair Saturday, April 19th, from 10 to 11:30 at Berkeley High School. And then we have a fair for our folks transitioning into middle school, our fifth grader to sixth grade transition fair, which is Saturday, April 26th, from 10 to 11:30 at MLK Middle School. Finally, because all of my other things were said, I'm going to end with congratulations. You already heard Director Vasudev congratulate our Berkeley Robotics Team, the Berkeley M Team. It made it to the semifinals, and we also won an Engineering Design Award at last week's competition. But what you might not have heard is that we have winners from our Oratorical Fest here in Berkeley that was held right before spring break. And so I want to congratulate the duo from Sylvia Mendez Elementary and the student at Willard, who won first place for their performance of "How It Feels to Be Colored Me" by Zora Neale Hurston, and to all of our incredible student performers from that evening's event. Finally, congratulations to the schools that placed in our attendance March Madness attendance challenge. Remember that? The March Madness? Y'all forgot about that? Stand up if you have a March Madness shirt on. Now, I'm not going to tell you which schools won. I'm not going to even tell you who placed where, because I want you to stay. And if you stay through our LCAP presentation, you will hear at the end of that presentation where our schools placed in that attendance challenge. Thank you all for your time, President. That's the end of my comments for this evening.
Thank you. And despite the fact that everyone stole what you were going to say, you still had some wonderful things to say, so we thank you for saying them. We will now move on to the approval of our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Moved by Director Shinoski. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice President Chang. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We will move on to item number 14, 14.1, which is our first and only action item of the evening, and that is Resolution 23037 in recognition of Adult Education Week. And so I'd like to welcome Associate Superintendent Hogendike, as well as Tom Reed, who will present this item. Welcome to you both.
All right. Good evening, board members, superintendent, members of the public. We are excited this evening to share a brief presentation in support of the action item before you, which is Resolution 25-037 in support of K-12 adult education and recognizing this week as Adult Education Week. Next slide. Thank you. We are going to ground this in our district's mission that we enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And often, we think about that in the context of our PK-12 schools, but it's important to note that we have an adult school program that serves over 4,000 students and is one of the oldest adult school programs in the state. Berkeley Adult School holds a vision to foster equitable, kind, and resilient communities and their own mission in alignment with our district's mission, that adult learners have the opportunity to engage in high-quality educational programs committed to equity, diversity, and belonging. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Reed to share with you a little bit about our own adult school program.
Next slide, please. Good evening, board members. Yes, so you can see on this slide, the, just some numbers of the adult school. You can see the 4,000 figure that, that Associate Superintendent Hogendike mentioned. You can also see, let me just briefly call attention to the fact that our ESL program has, represents almost half of our students that we served last year. And immigrants are throughout all programs. And so we're especially grateful for this district's support for protecting our immigrant students because they are throughout our program. You can also see, we serve many students that are seeking a high school diploma at this point in their lives, later in lives. They didn't get it the first, earlier in life. And we continue to serve that important community here in Berkeley and surrounding areas. Next slide, please. This year, there have been changes in the adult school. Certainly, we're all aware of the change that came with the Longfellow construction requirements. And so I'm, we are all very grateful for the district's support in providing us spaces that could support almost all of our program to continue in in-person mode. We have definitely found much lemonade in the new situations that we're in physically. So we're grateful for that, that support. Also new this year is there is a new administrative team, back one slide, that, that happened when we hired Bridget Luna to be our vice principal. And that teamwork is working wonderfully. Bridget brings a lot of new life and vitality and interests, given her own background in adult education and career technical education, and experienced at a comprehensive high school as well. What's, what she's bringing that's new is new relationships with organizations in the community. Just this morning, she and I met with the leader for the Alameda County Workforce Development Board, who wants to provide resources to improve the transitions to workforce for our students. So we are also seeing lots of appreciation happening, new energy around student support services. For example, a clothes closet activity is happening from time to time, which is something of distributing donations that are made for our very diverse students, and something of an exchange among students, things they don't need anymore. So we're really, really pleased with the life and the energy that's happening in our school with this, this change in our administrative team.
All right. And then with that, what we're asking for tonight is that the board take action to approve the resolution. And I'll just read the first clause. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Berkeley Unified School District recognizes April 6th through 13th, 2025, as Adult Education Week in California. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to pass Resolution 25037 in recognition of Adult Education Week?
I so move.
Moved by Director Shinoski.
I want a second.
Seconded by Director Corn. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes, and Resolution 25-037 is approved. So thank you all so much for your hard work and for bringing this resolution forward this evening. We will move on to our first discussion item of the night, which will be our mid-year Local Control Accountability Plan, better known as the LCAP update. This update tonight is specific to goal number three. As you all know, we've received updates in the past, but tonight, we are focusing on the LCAP update as it relates to goal number three. And so I am going to invite our staff, who will present tonight, to please come on. As they are coming, I'd like to also give an appreciation to you all. You all were scheduled to present at the last board meeting, but we did need to make some shifts because of time, and you all were very, very flexible. And so we appreciate you for doing that, and we appreciate you for making the time to come out again tonight to present. And whenever you are ready, you may begin.
All right. Oh, look, we, we have gifts. So as, as Dr. Shelley is passing out those gifts, I just wanted, and we're getting the presentation set up. Again, I'm Jill Hogendike, Associate Superintendent of the Educational Services Department, but I am joined here this evening, so happy to now say, Director Sweeney is officially Dr. Sweeney. So I want to offer congratulations to her, who is our Director of BREA, Dr. Shelley, who is our Director of Student Services, Ms. Rosina Karen, who is our district's mental health coordinator, and Vice Principal Doreen Bracamontes is joining us this evening. Again, anchoring in our district's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. See, that was a test to see if I could say it without forwarding the slide. It's not forwarding. We are going to, thank you. We're going to share with you some mid, it is April, but some mid-year data specifically on our LCAP goal number three. So we wanted to take a little bit of time to engage the board in a conversation around our attendance, chronic absenteeism, and suspension data, and highlight some of the practices and shifts that we have been making to address the needs of our students in, in these three areas. Want to remind folks that this work is grounded both in our LCAP goal number three, which is on wellness and belonging, and our emerging strategic plan, which has a pillar for wellness... is on wellness and belonging, and our Emerging Strategic Plan, which has a pillar for wellness and belonging. And while we know that wellness and belonging ultimately has an impact on our academic outcomes, we do have specific actions articulated across multiple plans that work to ensure that we are fostering safe, welcoming, and inclusive school environments that are humanizing, culturally and linguistically responsive for students and families, so that our students can come and be at school and be fully engaged. This is also situated in our theory of change, and specifically grounding in these three insights for organizational excellence, recognizing that in order to get ideal results, we need to have ideal behaviors, that purpose and system drive those behaviors, and mindsets inform those behaviors. And these five areas that we've been focusing on, even with our academic goals, hold true for our wellness and belonging goals as well. How are we focused on our Tier One supports, recognizing that differentiation and intervention are necessary through MTSS, that we're making decisions about how to support students that are data-informed, that we're working on collaborative practices, and that always we're using a continuous improvement mindset as we approach this work? Our three improvement framework questions that we have shared with you before is always around, what is it that we're trying to improve? As we have articulated in our various plans, we've set some specific measures for both academic and our social-emotional wellness goals. We do need to be clear about what changes or actions we're taking and why, and then be monitoring how we know those changes led to improvement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shelley, who's going to talk first about chronic absenteeism and attendance.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Board, Superintendent, community. So I'll just dive straight in. Next slide, please. So just to give you, again, a review of chronic absenteeism, what that is, as well as attendance rate and the difference between the two. So the attendance rate, if we were talking about 100 students, and if 95 students show up every day, you have a 95% attendance rate. It's pretty straightforward. Chronic absenteeism, what that is, is if a student misses 10% of the number of days that the student is enrolled in school, right? So that student would be deemed chronically absent if the student misses that 10%. A chronic absenteeism rate for the school would be the number of students that the school has that are chronically absent, right? And so that's how you can have what you see on the slide, where we finished the first semester with a 95.3 attendance rate and an 11% chronic absenteeism rate. And in comparison to where we were at the year before, we had a chronic absenteeism rate of 12%, first semester of '93, and a attendance rate of 95% in '93. And just to give you even more of just grounding in it, the state average for chronic absenteeism rate last year, and also Alameda County, is about 19%. So where we're at in comparison to the rest of the county and the state. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide right here has the attendance rate by grade and race and ethnicity. It's a bunch of numbers on the screen, so I won't go through all of those numbers, but I'll just give you just a brief overview of what some of the data says. So when we look at the, all the subgroups and across the grade levels, between kindergarten and fifth grade, every group improved or stayed level across kindergarten and fifth grade, and also the district improved or stayed level from year to year. So from '23, '24 to '24, '25, semester one, you can see there was no decline. We either stayed level or slightly improved. Next slide, please. Okay, this particular slide here is again, grade six through 12 grade, again, across grade level and race and ethnicity. Little different than the kindergarten and fifth grade. So in these particular groups, you have Asian students improved or stayed level at all grades except ninth grade. Black African-American students improved or stayed level at all grades except 10th grade. Filipino students improved or stayed level at all grades except 11th grade. Hispanic Latinx improved or stayed level at all grades except 6th grade. White students improved and stayed level at all grades. And as an overall district, we either improved or stayed level at all grades. Slide. Okay, so this graph looks a little bit different. This is our chronic absenteeism rate by grade. We actually have three years of data on the slide, and you can see the yellow is 2022, rate is 2023, and blue is first semester of 2024. And when we look at the chronic absenteeism rates, they declined in 10 of the grades that are represented from TK to kindergarten. So you can see, we had some decline in 10 of the 14 listed grades. Next slide. And then when we look at by subgroups, again, you'll see some decline in certain groups. Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do. The chronic absenteeism rate declined for our Asian, Hispanic, Latinx, multi-ethnic, white, and our overall, but we increased for our Black and African-American students. So there's some disproportionality you see in our chronic absenteeism rate. Again, a lot of work that we still need to do. Thank you. And then this last chronic absenteeism slide looks at some of our focal groups. And so the chronic absenteeism rate slightly decreased for McKinney-Ventle students over the first semester. It stayed relatively flat for students with disabilities, but it did slightly increase for foster youth and socio-economically disadvantaged students. Again, you can see the blue, red, and yellow. Okay, so, and when we talk about some of the things that we've done as a district to improve our attendance rate, we've had a district-wide focus on attendance. We've done celebrations and incentives. You'll hear a little bit later, the outcome of the March Madness Attendance Challenge. We've focused some of our communication around attendance, chronic absenteeism. So through our partnership with Everyday Lab, we've sent out different types of communication nudges. More than 3,000, almost 4,000 families have received different types of either text messages or letter messages regarding attendance. We sent out 5,400 mail nudges and more than 17,000 text messages through the campaign. We've also provided some transportation support, individualized intervention, professional development for staff. In fact, our last PD was just last month, before spring break. We were utilizing data, our early warning system. And then we have a partnership with the Alameda County Office of Education through a partnership called BASIS, is acronym, first letter of the different districts that are participating. And through that partnership, we received the LCSSP grant to fund some of the work that we're doing around attendance. Next slide. And then this slide just shows some additional supports that we're providing, particularly to some of our McKinney-Ventle students in the area of transportation, school supplies, hygiene kits, and then working with OFI staff to provide additional layers of support for students. And so this last slide just shows some of the improvement data. So 51% of chronically absent students who've been chronically absent improved to non-chronic. 70.5% of the students improved their attendance rates after receiving these nudges that we send out. And then 91% of students who were at risk, and for us, that's between 5% and 9%, either stayed in that same area, or they improved to satisfactorily less than 5%. Okay, now I'll pass it to Lena.
All right. Good evening, Board of Directors. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Here, we move to looking at the work happening at the site level regarding supporting student attendance, particularly as it relates to our three-by-five target. Our highlighted practitioner here, Ms. Lily Howell, is an OFI specialist at Emerson and also at Willard Middle School. Lily reflected in our interview that building trusting relationships with families is key to the work in supporting attendance, student attendance, and also working against chronic absenteeism. She and other educators we interviewed, from principals to interventionists, elevated the role of incentives and rewards, consistent monitoring and follow-up, cultural responsiveness in addressing attendance and engaging with families, as well as the value of community And so here, we lift up another qualitative data snapshot story, this time from our long-fellow principal, Ms. Selita Mitchell, and the movement her team is making using continuous improvement to increase attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. She spoke to using data to drive interventions, devising strategies to support attendance through collaborative attendance team, attendance to, excuse me, attention to individualized support for students, and consistent, supportive, and ongoing communication with families and caregivers for our students with attendance challenges. Next slide.
Oh, and just one more thing before I move on. When we talk about chronic absenteeism, it counts all absences, whether they're excused absences or unexcused absences, as well as suspensions count towards chronic absenteeism. And so then, now we can segue to talking about some of the suspension data. Thank you. Now, again, the barcode's a little different than what we were doing around chronic absenteeism. Actually, Lee reads left to right by year, but looking at the data, you can see the suspensions have gone down for every group except for white students and Asian students. And overall, suspensions have been reduced by 26% over last year. Black and African-American students have reduced by 40%, however, they're still disproportionately reflected in our suspension numbers. You went to next slide, okay. And so, and then suspensions have also gone down, have been reduced for all of our program groups except for foster youth. But the number is such a small number for foster youth, it's not reflected on the slide, but I can tell you, it just went from one to two suspensions for foster youth. Special education students have been reduced by 34%, and socio-economically, students have been reduced by 38% over the prior year. Okay, so the district employs a variety of strategies to cultivate a positive and supportive school climate. These include implementing SEL programs that teach students self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. The district also invests in professional development for administrators and staff to enhance their abilities to manage our schools effectively, address behavioral issues constructively, and foster positive relationships with students. Wellness and well-being is a point of emphasis for us, and restorative practices are also used. And we also have a Climate and Culture TSA, Michelle Reese, that works closely with school sites and staff as well. And then we also actively utilize our positive behavior matrix by our administrators to, again, look at strategies and approaches in alternative to suspensions.
So here again, we present a snapshot of work at the site level. Can you hear me? Okay, let me get it a little closer. I'm usually kind of loud, but, okay. In this, on this slide, we present a snapshot of work at the site level, using qualitative data from our interviews with practitioners on fostering a positive school culture and climate while actively working to reduce suspensions. They highlighted through these interviews a multi-level response with a focus on educational opportunities alongside disciplinary actions. This aligns with the commitment to restorative practices. The practitioners that we interviewed also reinforced the key component of relationship building, with teams prioritizing engagement with students and caregivers. This effort strengthens our school communities, making students feel more connected and supported. In our interview, Cassie highlighted on this slide, and other BUSD educators spoke to the importance of data and feedback to inform strategies, allowing teams to evaluate the effectiveness of interventions in order to make any necessary adjustments. And next slide.
All right. And we're going to pass the microphone down to Vice Principal Bracamontes, because we do want to highlight a couple of other things that have been happening in the district relative to actions that we're taking toward wellness and belonging.
So a few top highlights here. Big takeaway that I'd like to share is that students are increasingly accessing the Wellness Center, and they're doing it to manage stress and to connect to a continuum of care. And so I have two semesters' worth of data to share. You can see in our first semester opened, there were 1,120 student visitors. 380 of those students were unduplicated visitors. And then this fall, we had 1,395 student visitors, and 425 of them were unduplicated. What's important to note, and important to us at the site, is that 36% of those student visitors have 504 plans and individualized education plans, and they represent students who participate in special education in all of the programs that are offered on our campus. 53.5% of our student visitors identify as Black or Latino. That's a really important data point, because we know that subgroups like Black and Latino students are hesitant to access services, both on-campus and even more so off-campus. And so the fact that students are showing up to the Wellness Center is a big deal, and it's giving us data. Last thing, I know I'm supposed to do like one minute, is that this is actual student data. This is what the kids are telling us by showing up to us. Our student screener captures why they're dropping in. And so you can see that they're seeing our restorative justice folks, and they're looking for, they're attending a group meeting, they're letting us know that they're feeling stressed or anxious, they're reporting that there's some kind of classroom issue, and that there's academic stress, and that data is driving other work with other folks. Thank you.
Hi, to our amazing board members. I'm here to give you an update on our MHSSA grant. The first update is they changed the name. It's now our BHSSA grant, has nothing to do with us, and we still have the same amount of money, but they changed it to Behavioral Health. And this is a $2.4 million grant that our district was allotted, and we are in year three of the four-year grant. And the people who wrote the grant were very intentional, and it was well-written and aligned with our district's needs. So the funds that were allocated to us, we are in full compliance with all of the grant stipulations, and they are funding critical mental health services in our schools. This initiative has provided funds for elementary school mental health support, for Care Navigator, Carol Perez, to assist families in accessing mental health services, and my position as Mental Health Service Coordinator. We've established a thriving wellness center at Berkeley Technology Academy, based on the data and experience from Berkeley High School. And that Wellness Center at BTEC also houses their peer-to-peer mentoring program funded by this grant, and also supports, the grant also supports counseling interns with a stipend for their service. The grant is also helping us strengthen and build a stronger partnership with the City of Berkeley Family, Youth, and Children Services. Also, because we do have a Mental Health Services Coordinator, now we have been able to take advantage of a generous offer from Seneca, and they agreed to place five therapists in our district at no cost to us. So we took our needs assessment that we had conducted, that was paid for by this grant, and we thought about where's the best place, based on the needs assessment, to put these five therapists. So we put one in each of our middle schools, and one therapist is at BTEC, housed in the Wellness Center that the grant funded. And then we have a new therapist doing newcomer work, so she's splitting her time between King and Sylvia Mendez. Next slide. So in addition to continuing the programs that I mentioned below, the second half of the grant period is really supposed to be focused on sustainability. And as we are looking at many budget cuts in our district, which we are all very sadly well aware of, we have explored the option to join the California Youth Behavioral Health Initiative fee schedule as a potential revenue source for our mental health service provision. This is This is an initiative that's statewide, and California is beginning to reimburse schools for student mental health services. And BUSD offers, as you know, quite an extensive level of support for mental health for our students, but the future funding is a challenge. So we're looking at the California Youth Behavioral Health Initiative Fee Schedule and working with our city partner, as well as our current community-based organizations who we already have in place in our elementary schools and Seneca, to secure sustainable funding so we can continue the vital mental health services for our students. Thank you.
All right, and as we close out this presentation, just wanted to share with you a few next steps. Obviously, we're analyzing the spring data, as this information will help contribute to our annual update for the LCAP and our strategic plan. We do have our 2025 annual planning survey data, which gave us a robust amount of information, and we've wrapped up and are waiting for the California Healthy Kids Survey data to come back to us. We are, as you know, in the budget development process. As part of this process, we are also using some of our spring analysis to determine the future use of our Learning Recovery Block Grant Funds and our Title IV Funds, both of which provide allowability to use for mental health services. And as Rosina just shared, our fee schedule implementation is going to require some internal infrastructure. We'll continue to get guidance from ACOE, but that is potentially a revenue-generating opportunity for BUSD that, you know, will probably start off small, but as we work to grow it, can help generate some funds. And then with that, should we do a drum roll? I feel like we need to do a drum roll. March Madness winners.
You got the next slide. Okay, so just so you know, we had two competitions going at the same time. We had group competitions, and then we had overall competition for, you know, all the schools in the district. So for Group One, which were the early start schools, Berkeley Arts Magnet brought home the title. For Group Two, it was Washington Elementary School, and then Willard Middle School for the middle schools, and the ninth grade class for high school. And then Ruth Ackee had the highest overall attendance rate. So just to give you a quick couple of numbers, so Ruth Ackee's attendance rate for the month of March was 96.6%, which is their highest month that they've had since October, right? So they, you know, blew away. Washington achieved their highest rate, which was 95% since September. So the month of March was better than every month that preceded it, except for September. BAM, they received their highest rated month since December, which is 95.2%. Willard, their attendance rate was 95.3, and then the ninth grade class had an attendance rate of 94.7. And so, you know, there was a, I think it was an excellent competition. Kids were excited. We, you know, we passed out all kind of little awards and different things. School sites were promoting attendance. We still have a lot of work to do around Fridays, Mondays, before holidays and after holidays. So that's our next focus area that we'll focus on, improving the attendance rates on those days. But we continue to exceed where we were the year before, and so we have a couple of months left for school, so we have to ride this momentum to finish strongly. So that's, that's what I'm going to be pushing with the school sites. Let's finish.
Thank you all so much for your presentation, especially the excitement at the end. And so a huge shout-out to our schools who did such a great job with the March Madness competition, and our schools who did win. We're going to take questions from the Board of Education. I'll start, as my colleagues get their questions together. A few questions around attendance and suspension, so we'll start there. So we, in your chart, I can't remember which page it is on, but we saw an increase in chronic absenteeism, specifically at some of the grades at the high school level, which, you know, those of us who went to Berkeley High School can come up with many different theories of why. We saw that increase. But we also, I also want to appreciate you all sharing the improving attendance actions, and they're really awesome, especially the TechSpot Director Korn and Liz and I were talking last week about the TechSpot updates that you all send to parents to keep them informed and to not just ask them why their students were absent, but to also connect them with resources that may help students get to school. And so I think--
She's outing me as a parent who receives texts from the TechSpot.
No, not just you, all the parents. But those things are really, really great. But what else can we do to support the decrease of chronic absenteeism at the high school level? And I'm asking that question specifically because we know that it looks different. And so because it looks different at the high school level, the needs are different. And it could be a range of things, from engagement to schedules, to even suspensions, to, there are a number of things. And so what's the story, what's the need, and what can we do to support?
I mean, well, you kind of touched upon it. I mean, there's a range of reasons why students may miss school, right? And just like fingerprints, you know, you're going to have different needs, you're going to have different risk factors and different barriers. And so really, you know, first focusing on tier-one interventions for all students, and then providing individualized support for those students who have tier-two and tier-three needs. Typically, your tier-three needs are going to be, support that go just beyond the school, but also include community partners. And so there are students, for example, now that we're working with them and their families and providing, for example, transportation support, but understanding that there's still underlying challenges that this family may be experiencing, and how can we connect them with resources to support them? But I think one of the other big things is, again, raising awareness around the importance of attending school every single day, you know, talking about, you know, potential learning loss. And then, you know, again, changing the culture at a school site where it's a culture of attendance, right? And we're constantly talking attendance, constantly communicating with families, constantly understanding what their needs are, and then addressing those particular needs.
If I could add just a concrete bullet to give you like a glimpse of discussions that happen, right? So when we, when we are faced with having to issue a consequence for a behavior that's not okay, the administrative team is always looking for alternative means of correction, right? And so we're looking at what, how do we stop that behavior from happening again, and how do we teach? And so when you ask, like, what can we do? It is, for me, and the admin team, and all of the support teams on campus, teachers would agree, we, we need to be able to have what we're starting to have behind the scenes, implementing capacity building and time items for school counselors, for the RJ staff, for the wellness team. And those teams of people are getting really specific with the type of PD that they want and are creating for themselves. And so that work is going to influence our ability to then make space for a student, for example, who got suspended and then on their re-entry needs to now have a certain set of counseling meetings to be able to develop a communication and relational skills with that teacher, so brief interventions. So being able to fund people who can do that and have those PD opportunities is going to influence our system.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing both of those responses, and also want to shed some light on the importance of engagement and keeping our students engaged at the high school level, because that plays a huge role in what classes our students decide to show up to, what days our students decide to show up on. And so I'm really looking to our high school staff and, you know, our high school administrators, as well as our educators, who will work together to think about and to reimagine what engagement looks like for our high school students. I know sometimes it becomes the same thing warmed up for our students, and we want to keep them engaged. Number one, because we know, as we talked about earlier, that it does have a direct impact to our budget, but more importantly than that, we know that kids can't learn if they're not in the seats. And our most important goal here is to ensure that our kids are learning. And so if we need to be the pioneers of engaging students and keeping them engaged at school and wanting to continue to come to school, especially by the time they reach senior year, then I'd love to partner with you all and to hear some cool ideas and innovative ways in which we could do that. Next, moving on to suspensions. First, Dr. Shelley, I'd like to appreciate you calling out that our black and African-American students are still disproportionately suspended as it relates to their counterparts. But I do want to take a moment to celebrate how far we've come as a district. When I first joined the Board of Education way back in Wander, the Wander years, a million years ago, back in 2018, we just went through a process that helped us to reduce suspension and expulsion rates for our black and African-American students. And at that time, they were double, almost three times as much as what we are seeing now. And so we do have a lot to be proud of because of that reduction. And I know that it is really the work of so many things, the working together, restorative practices, things that you mentioned earlier that helped us to reduce those suspension rates for our black and African-American students, as well as policies that were written by the Board of Education that helped to reduce our expulsion rates. And so I'm happy to see that number dwindling down, but I do want to appreciate you for calling out what is true and what is still happening in BUSD. The data was disaggregated, of course, by race and by socioeconomic status, as well as an opportunity to highlight suspensions for our special education students. But I'd like to also know which divisions, meaning elementary, middle, and high school, were we seeing the bulk of our suspensions, knowing that this information will help us to be intentional about our support services and restorative practices, making those practices and services division-specific. And so if we don't have that data today, I'd like to receive that at another time.
Yes, we can get that for you. I mean, I know offhand that the majority of the suspensions are in secondary, so I do know that, but we can get the exact numbers.
Okay, thank you, that would be great. And then once we do know that, in the same way that you were mentioning, using our counselors to support and help with their suspension or think about alternatives to suspension, it would be great to see that happening at the middle school level as well. Go ahead. Thank you.
Just affirming you.
Thank you, thank you very much. For colleagues, do you have questions? We'll go with Director Shinaskey and Director Vasudev, and then Director Shinaskey.
Sure, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, and I loved seeing the data about the Wellness Center. That was really exciting for me that you're collecting that data, and also I just wanted to know like how we're learning from it. So one question was about group, I noticed that the students are identifying that they're attending a group meeting, so I had a question if that's group mental health, and just kind of, if you could just kind of give us an idea of the kind of group meetings that are taking place at the Wellness Center. That's one question. And then the second question, I'm noticing that stress is a big factor why students are coming into the Wellness Center, either academic stress or just general feelings of stress. Wanted to dig in a little deeper into that, and if we're looking at, is it, you know, college-related stress, is it a particular class, is it, you know, what are, what are the stressors, general, like, large buckets, and how can we better support students with the stresses that they're identifying at the high school? So those are my two questions.
Thanks for asking that. As far as groups, we have a community partner, Nairobi, longtime partner, at least at Berkeley High School. And two times a week, there is a facilitator who comes in, and they work closely with the RJ coordinators. And there are identified students who participate in mindful breathing practices. So there's one-on-one, depending on the class period, there's one-on-one sessions for students who need a tier-three level one-on-one space to do that and practice that coping strategy. And then also there's a boys' group and a girls' group that do that breathing. We also currently have two student, two different titled groups that are being hosted by school psychologists with students in special education. And so I'm going to get this, I can't remember the second title, but like Executive Functioning is one. And then, and another one is maybe social and behavioral-based, to assist students, again, with strategies and relationship building. So those are three groups that go on in the Wellness Center right now. Your other question is, is a question that we'll keep asking, and that's where the work is. It's super clear by the student data that their reporting of stress and anxiety related to the classroom, it, there's a whole continuum of their why and their specific reason, and that's the workspace that we're in. And so we want to understand more on an individual basis, because the screener just gives us that tagline, that category, and the ways in which we're preparing ourselves to dig in and learn more about students' anxiety and stress, and what we can do to ameliorate that is multi-pronged. An example is, the coordinator of the Wellness Center is currently piloting in one classroom, a ninth-grade classroom, a wellness area, and in which the teacher is going to observe what items students are taking for, to relieve stress or whatever energy they have, and then get some feedback from students. So we're piloting, we want to see what's happening in a classroom, or what a teacher can do about that. A second thing is, there are universal classroom presentations that are providing students information to understand what's happening in their bodies. Example, a school counselor is, has presented to classrooms in her learning community about identifying what stress and burnout feels like, particularly around the college entrances. So those are two anecdotes, I could go on, but we're, we're testing, right? At a universal level, what's the prevention? If I start to understand and be aware of what's happening in my body, then I can engage, when I'm one-on-one or in a group, with what coping strategy might I do to, to then work on that? And so for that, I need that whole team, the RJ coordinators, all my counselors, and everyone. Director Shinaskey.
Yeah, I have two sort of separate threads of questions. One, so first, attendance. So the 11% chronically absent, I mean, it's one in 10 students is chronically absent in our district. So yes, it's a budgetary issue, and yes, it also impacts that student, and it also impacts the other students in the classes that they're missing, you know, as, as students try to make up work. And so I just want to, you know, one in 10 students is chronically absent. That's a lot of students that are missing a lot of school. And so I'm looking at some of the improvement data that's listed, and it's a little bit hard to look at for me as a, as a science person, because it's percentages. And so a lot of those categories are small, small groups, and so the percentages are a little bit misleading. So I would love to see actually like numbers of students rather than percentages in those kinds of presentations, because I think it tells a more real story. And then the other thing I'm wondering is, you know, the changes are quite small, and if you look at attendance data for the last like five years or so, we see sort of these small fluctuations. So I'm wondering, the data's great, but the data's only great if we have, you know, some kind of idea about why it's changing. So do we have any ideas about why it's changing? Like if we look at the March Madness winners, and we say, March was the best month, you know, since September for a particular school, is there something that they implemented? Is there something that's scalable and something that we can really sort of test to see if it's, if it is scalable, and if it actually is the change that made a difference? I would be really curious about that information. And I would also like to suggest that I think some of the communication strategies are great. I think, you know, texting people, sending letters are great, but it really is like the personal connections that are going to keep kids coming. And so I think it's really important for us as a board to really consider the investment in education as an investment in attendance, and that it requires more than a text that a parent has to respond to. a parent has to respond to or a letter that can easily be thrown in the recycling bin and has, you know, no real impact or support. Usually, if kids, in my experience, are missing school, they're missing, something's going on, right? And so we have to find out. I realize it is individual, but yeah. So that's my attendance comments and questions. I guess they're all comments. Okay, the Wellness Center is actually a question. So the Wellness Center was really, a lot of the work around putting the Wellness Center at Berkeley High and collaborating with the city was in response to a student suicide. And my understanding of the Wellness Center and the way that students utilize it is they really have to sort of out themselves in class as wanting to go to the Wellness Center, and that the Wellness Center, for many students, it's like a drop-in for 10 minutes, you know, and then they have to go back to class. So both of those things, to me, are not super supportive of crisis, of kids that are in crisis and may not be comfortable saying, you know, often when tragedy strikes, people are like, "I had no idea." So I'm wondering what kind of outreach we're doing with kids to normalize discussions about mental health and making sure that that space isn't just a space that we think is great and that we think is helping with mental health issues, but this, but is actually making a difference.
Yeah, thanks for that. So the Wellness Center is not our crisis response. The folks who lead our crisis response, which is actually a care response on campus, they deploy to a space where a student might be noticed or observed to need a counselor or caring adult to interface with them to see what's happening. So students are not, if a student's comfortable enough and they walk through those doors and they're in crisis, they get assistance that way as well. But what we've normalized on campus for adults is to call a care response when we see a student, whether it's a tier-three actual crisis or learn of a student who's in crisis, to a student who might just be having, needs some emotional support for something that they can easily regulate about. And the Wellness Center drop-in space is being used for students who are not experiencing, it's not, it's for anybody who does need a break. So when you see the high rates of students with 504s and IEPs showing up, it's because those are kids who have a higher likelihood of needing built-in breaks in their day. And so they are advocating for themselves and their time and utilizing the Wellness Center appropriately. And that's a really great skill, right? And it's actually a lot of students' goals, like, how can I acknowledge when I need a break? Go utilize that, give myself that time, and then re-engage with my learning. That's the kind of break we want to encourage, and that's what's starting to be normalized on our campus. Did I miss something else you asked? I guess what I wanted to convey to you is, there's like this whole ecosystem, and we talk about a counseling and wellness department, and everything's not happening in the Wellness Center, but the Wellness Center is our gateway and our hub. You referenced kind of the case that really initiated the outpouring of resources. And something I want people to know is, what we learned about our big campus is that there needed to be one place that was always open, so that if there was a student who didn't know where to go, they could land there. And that's what's happening.
Thanks. Director Corn?
I have a couple of questions and comments that sort of build on things that have already been said. So first, about attendance. I was, similar to President Brown, I was struck by some of the grade levels where we're seeing increases in chronic absence. And I noticed that sixth grade and ninth grade were two of those grade levels, and it made me think about all the talk earlier tonight about the transition fair and whether that's an opportunity, starting this month, to begin to partner with families to help improve those attendance rates at sixth grade and ninth grade and help figure out what support those kids need in order to be in school consistently in sixth grade and ninth grade. So that was my first thought. And then my second thought, kind of building on the conversation about the text bot that talks to me a lot in my phone and the letters in the mail. I mean, it's really my experience as both a parent and an educator, that what's most effective is, to Director Brown's point, really robust classroom engagement and relationships. And all of the presentation about attendance focused on sort of district-level systems for communicating with families about attendance, and then site-level sort of extra supports like OFI. But I think there's this piece about what are classroom teachers doing to engage their kids and to be in partnership with families to keep their kids in school that has to be part of the puzzle. And I know our teachers are very busy and working really hard already, but this is a really critical piece of the work. I don't know if anybody wants to respond to that or if that's just a comment, but...
No, I can answer the question. So when we're talking about the tech nudges, for example, that is a piece, it's just a piece of what we do, right? So teachers are still calling parents, they're still holding parent conferences, admin assistants, principals are still contacting with families, we're still working with our student welfare and attendance liaison who does home visits. So, you know, so when we talk about the nudges, the way I look at those is no more different than, you know, giving a parent an update on math or giving them an update on how their child is doing in English, language, arts. We're just giving you information around attendance, because we know that, you know, missing a day here, missing a day there, and without really even realizing it, it just sneaks up on you and you've missed 10 days, right? And so it's providing parents with additional information, but also letting them know that we do have additional supports. So even though you may be receiving messages via text box, which can then connect you with resources both within the district and within the community, we also are following up with families as well. And so, you know, our attendance clerks, for example, at the high school, work very hard to engage with families.
Thank you for that. I also had a Wellness Center question, which is that I recently met with the AGES group, the Alliance of Gender Expansive Students at Berkeley High School. And there was a lot of conversation in that group about needs for greater mental health supports at Berkeley High. So I was struck in your presentation that you had disaggregated the data and looked at students with 504s and IEPs, Black and Latino students, but there was nothing about our LGBTQ plus students on that slide, which seems like a really important population to be targeting. We know that there's lots of evidence that they're a very vulnerable population in terms of mental health in high school. So how are we, how are we also outreach-ing to those kids and making sure that they are getting access to the supports and services that they need and counting and measuring that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, absolutely. I have data on, I have other data points that we can share offline with you. There were just so much that I picked some high-level public ones and can absolutely include that in any, like, future. But we do have it to share after the meeting for you to see that. Some noticings are, there are lots of different subgroups of students who, you know, we want to get to the Wellness Center. And so what we've done this year is, each month, when the Wellness Center coordinator looks at, she looks at data each month, who showed up, who's showing up, sharing it with the admin team, sharing it with a few other support teams and asking, what's missing? Who's missing? And so what we've done is, we've added in, oh, let's, who's not coming from the M Building all the way across school? And we noticed, like, that was a light, students who were in the M Building were not coming to visit. And so we thought, do we need advertising? So we're changing what we're doing so that we can make some targeted outreach. Similar, we wanted to know, okay, what learning communities, right? Our students who identify more openly as in the LGBTQI community are located and tend to be part of a particular learning community, not exclusively. And so we can do things like have outreach. Right now, it's been very superficial, you know, naming in a G-Shack meeting. There's space to host if you want to, you know, have group meetings there, but we haven't had a targeted person to draw them in. And so that's something that we can absolutely work on. They see the adults who facilitate the groups and meetings and already had those trusting relationships, and so I think there hasn't been incentive to move where they meet and congregate. And so there's just some outreach that needs to be done. Thank you for that.
Vice President Cheng?
Thank you so much. Thanks for this presentation, and the trends look very promising, and I appreciate all the effort and intentionality that's gone into this with regard to the suspensions as well as the attendance. My question, and I'm sorry for your many, many questions, is on the Wellness Center. Yeah, and I think it's because it's such an amazing program and a great space. And you referred to it as this important kind of portal or gate function.
Like a gateway and a hub.
Gateway, gateway and a hub, and I really like that. And I know we've had this conversation before as well, but in this broader context. One is, I really appreciate your raising that this is an important space for students with disabilities. In particular, those, you know, have manifestations that are associated with executive functioning and anxiety, which covers a broad range. And that's an important space where they can also self-advocate and go utilize that space. I think that's amazing. And I'm thinking, because manifestations of disabilities tend to become flagged early on, before high school, in middle school in particular, some of those manifestations start to emerge, and you see 504 and IEP plans, you know, that's the time and space oftentimes when parents and students and teachers become aware and formalize those I just want to support and emphasize bringing the work that you're doing at the high school with this gateway and hub. While we may not have wellness quote-unquote centers in our three middle schools, some type of space or learning or practice, because that is where our students are first manifesting or we are becoming aware of the manifestations of their disabilities. So transitioning them earlier is going to make a big difference in the high school setting. So this is a kind of an us-together type of project, and I support that. And in the future, you know, if there's like information upon that, and I'm not saying you have to have it now, but ways in which we have been able to, you know, convert that understanding and skill set down to the middle schools.
Absolutely. Sharing, scaling, and whatnot. Just to comment briefly on it, it's all new, right? We're in this development phase, but Rosina partners constantly with me, and so we're learning and sharing, knowing that, the same way that Berkeley High was just the first to have a wellness space, that BTEC was the priority to do next, and Rosina made that happen. And so we're, because we're growing, we're sharing, we're aligning practices and doing that together. And so we definitely have that as part of the plan, knowing middle school, elementary schools, what's appropriate in those spaces and how do we replicate? And I'll give that to you.
No, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, Berkeley High and their Wellness Center, starting things off and setting things in place and creating systems was amazing. Our middle schools do have quite a number of resources for our children for the very reasons that you've mentioned. So back in 2015, when we were looking at LCAP and how are we going to spend that money, at that time, we decided to put the money in restorative justice counselors in the middle schools. So each middle school has an RJ counselor. Also, Longfellow now has their Umoja counselor, and Longfellow and Berkeley High share a Puente counselor. And Willard has a really strong counseling team, as does King. And each site, each school has official and unofficial spaces that function as wellness rooms already, but, to your point, should we come upon a windfall, setting up a Wellness Center in every middle school is, we definitely have the data to show that it will be useful. We have, for example, when I was at Longfellow, we kept data on who came to what was then Room One, and now they call it the Brain Break Room at the adult school. But we have the data to show that students would definitely come through if we had, they do come in the spaces that exist, but it would be really nice to be able to have actual designated larger spaces. And I know that when they're looking at the facilities for Longfellow, they're looking at that also, and King also has various spaces throughout the school that they're using for that purpose.
Yeah, and I guess what I would hope that you would hear is that, you know, back to our theory of change and improvement, like, we're trying to be data-informed, and we recognize that this work sits in a continuous improvement landscape, right? These are some new strategies that we've been trying. Some things have worked, some things have not worked. We're getting feedback and input, most importantly, from our students, but also from our staff about how to make that better. And I think one of the things that I do appreciate about the work that both Doreen and Rosina have been leading is this intentionality around starting smaller. So what can we do first? How do we learn from that before we scale and spread, which is an important component of any, any process that we're doing in a school district, but particularly, you know, it's great for us to be able to say, we want wellness centers everywhere. But if we don't understand, like, the nuances, the resources that are needed to support that work, and I think one of the challenges that we're facing is, where are we going to have consistent resources to sustain this work over time? We are providing for mental health counselors at the elementary school through our Learning Recovery Block grant that is going to expire. We know that we'll be able to generate some funds if we can get the fee-based reimbursement online, but it's $800,000 for the mental services that we're providing at our elementary schools, and then we can add up the counseling staff that is necessary to be able to support these programs. So we definitely want to do the work. We know that this is an important support for our students. We know that in order for them to feel safe and come to school, we also need to provide spaces for them to be able to process those stressors that are happening. But we also have to recognize that those, the resources that are needed for that before we do large-scale, large-scale work.
And I would just also add another learning that we have with any change or continuous improvement effort, and just in the vein of starting small, is then how do we make sure that we are training all of our staff, that the systems and structures that we see, to your point, Director Shinaskey, that perhaps are working for attendance or are working with the Wellness Center are not exclusive to small groups or to one-offs, but really becomes the norm and the culture of the school and the school system. And so as we are doing things smaller, starting smaller and learning, we do also acknowledge the reality that there are experiences that were shared in this presentation that are likely not the experiences of every parent or every student in BUSD, and that is our goal, that's the answer scale. But there's a lot more learning that we have to do along the way.
Thank you all so much for your presentation and for taking all of our questions. We appreciate your work and are excited about the continuous improvement that we will see as it relates to LCAP goal number three. Thank you all. We will take a quick break, and then we will go into our presentation, our budget presentation.
our budget presentation.
He wants me to start your clock now, Pauline.
Start the clock!
Jelena, can you pick up your stuff?
Hey, I'll see you.
All right, so start with Jelena.
All right, I'll see you.
I got for Friday. I need to call my mom.
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right, well, maybe in the...
It's not working!
Well, I knew it was going to be a long night, but hey, from here, the rest of the week's downhill, eh?
I just prefer to eat the next side piece.
Yeah, I like saying that.
Most sure you have every kind of...
Yeah, you can call her.
Right. She's working out of class and maybe she has to help you again.
It's coming up on... So I hope you enjoyed my presentation. All right, Clara. I have too many things to try and look at at the same time. Missing anybody?
All right. We are moving to our second discussion item of the night, item 15.2, which is an update on the Berkeley Unified School District Budget Balancing Process. And so, I'm happy to invite Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Pauline Falinsby-Ev, who will lead us in this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, President Brown. So this evening, we're going to be going over the budget balancing solution. I'll be giving an update in terms of where we are in the process and other things that are influencing our budget balancing process and our target, and a quick overview of next steps. And this worked earlier. I know it's not working. So as with other presentations, it's grounded in our mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contribution to the world. And we do this by employing our four Es: excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment. Next slide. And on this slide, we have an overview of the agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about the target. And that's our goal for budget balancing. This is impacted by the governor's budget updates. And I'm going to share a bit of an update with you on that. Then I'm going to let you know where we are in terms of getting to our target. First of all, understanding the process, looking at the roadmap, what's our goal and where we've reached so far. And then, the actual proposals that we've undertaken. And then, a brief summary of next steps. So in terms of identifying the target, we did this when we did our multi-year projections. We're currently in year '24-'25. And as part of that presentation, we do a multi-year projection for two subsequent years. So the year that we're currently working on is '25-'26, which is the second year of our budget balance, of our multi-year projection. And it's important for us to understand what informs the targets. So next slide. So I mentioned the second interim presentation. So when we came to the board for the second interim, we had to present multi-year projections. This is a summary or a snapshot of our multi-year projections. And why this is relevant is because we actually use the multi-year projections to come up with our budget balancing solution. So the first page has a lot of our revenue assumptions, our ADA and enrollment assumptions. And what we know, building our budget from assumptions from the governor's January budget, we updated the '25-'26 numbers. So on the next slide, the next slide is where you would see the target that we're actually working towards. It's the $7.6 million in '25-'26 with an additional $200,000 in '26-'27. So with this, with this target, in other words, reducing expenses or increasing revenue by this amount, this will give us basically a balanced budget where we're spending pretty much the same amount that we're bringing in, in '25-'26. And that would actually give us an ending fund balance or an undesignedated ending fund balance of $1.2 million for '25-'26. So this, there's actually, we had no change in the target, even though we know some things have changed in terms of the governor's budget. So the things that impact the target on this slide, we're talking about the fact, the governor's budget. What we're working with is a January assumption. When we get the final, governor's budget is going to possibly impact our target as well. And within the proposals, the two things that I want us to focus on are the block grants and the TK add-on in LCFF. So we can go to the next slide.
Can you do me a favor? Can you go back just two slides over for just a second?
This, this slide?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have questions?
I don't have a question yet. I just wanted to give us a second to look at it for just a minute.
So this is what we shared at the second interim, the multi-year projections.
That is correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So before we kind of start looking at numbers, we have to understand the process and what guides us and what we're actually, some of the steps we're taking to actually meet the target. So, next slide. So on this slide, we have our core values of resource allocations, as well as some of the steps that we have implemented to try and meet this target. So our core values of resource allocation, it's important because we want to make sure that we're, whatever we're doing is equitable. There's transparency, excellence, engagement, sustainability. There's transparency, excellence, engagement, sustainability, and stability. A lot of times, we do one-time solutions, which is really not sustainable, and it's not the best way to actually achieve our budget balancing target. But in some cases, we are forced to use one-time solutions, which means that we have to actually kick the can down the road for the following year. And on the right side, you can see the various steps that we're implementing. We're evaluating and removing vacant positions, as well as other steps listed on that slide. And this is the way that we're kind of looking at the lowest hanging fruit first, and then kind of progressing and looking at other steps in terms of how we're looking at the budget and how we're trying to come up with these budget balancing solutions. Next slide. And this is just more of the process in terms of looking at all our proposals, making sure there's engagement, looking at possible budget reductions, working with our budget partners to come up with decisions that we will bring to the board for voting. Next slide. And as I mentioned, our target has been, is impacted by the governor's January budget. And I just want to go through two things here that actually impacted our target. So the first one is the COLA. So what we got before the governor's budget, we were looking at year twenty-five, twenty-six as a focus. So you can see before we got the governor's budget, the COLA was two point nine three for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, three point five-two, three point six-three, and three point four-nine. What's significant is when we got the governor's budget, the COLA was actually reduced to two point four-three percent. And we were asked to actually take that into a consideration when building the multi-year at second interim. Now, each percentage is about a million, so a point five percent would equate to about five hundred thousand dollars. So we actually lost five hundred thousand dollars. That's displayed on the next slide. So you can see that in terms of what we were thinking we were gonna get at the two point nine-three versus the two point four-three, we lost five hundred and one thousand dollars in base funding and twenty-nine thousand dollars in supplemental. So this is already included in the second interim numbers that I shared with you. And this is taken into account in the seven point six million dollar target that we're working with. Next slide. These are other proposals that were in the governor's January proposed budget. You can see the LCFF add-on. I'm only focusing on two things here. The LCFF add-on would give us about seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And there's also a new discretionary block grant that everybody got really excited about. We didn't have a lot of information at the time, but we've since gotten information about the grant, as well as how it should be treated moving forward. So let's go to the next slide. So the block grant, what we received after we went to the governor's workshop, the January workshop, was that we were gonna get this block grant. Three twenty-three dollars per ADA, we're told it was gonna be totally discretionary. We could use it for increasing costs. It was flexible. It was one-time, but at the same time, three million dollars sounded really good to us, just in terms of, well, this would definitely help our seven point nine target. However, we were advised by ACOE, who we actually work with closely, and School Services, to say there are too many unknowns about this grant. At that time, we were talking about the fires. We're not sure if we're gonna be getting it on a straight ADA basis, or maybe some UPP factors put in place. So we still cannot count on this three million because we might not meet the revised requirements, and it's not gonna be as flexible as we thought. They think they're gonna be putting more guidelines. This is information that we received from School Services and ACOE, and that we use those assumptions to build our budget. Next slide, we mentioned briefly the TK add-on. That factor was three million, one fifty-two. In the January budget, there was a proposal to increase it to six thousand four oh four, which would give us about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars more. Again, in this situation, a lot of unknowns, not sure we're gonna actually receive it. So we're advised not to take this into account. So that's about three point eight million dollars, which we could love to score, but we're advised not to, and we have to comply with that. So this is the summary. All the other things, we were advised to develop tentative internal plans. In other words, when I present the second interim to the various, to ACOE, they do not want to see the items in the right column included. The only thing that we could technically include would have been the two point four-three COLA, which means that we were losing five hundred thousand dollars. So still no concrete news on the three point eight million dollars that we're kind of hoping we will get, but we have to move forward as if it's not there because we have been advised to do that by ACOE. And this slide, no, go back, sorry. And this slide just kind of reminds everybody, it's really, really rough weather ahead, and of course, we're gonna have to make trade-offs. We can't do everything, we can do some things. And this is becoming more obvious as we're trying to meet our seven point six million dollar target. So proposals, these are actual proposals, working with the superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee staff. We've actually come up with proposals that I will share with you on the next few slides. So this is our overall roadmap, and I know our superintendent wants to see a map, but we're not getting a map. I was clowned in S-BAC, anyway. So we talked about a seven point six, I was trying to actually get a map to put on this slide. So, anyway, this is a roadmap. And the target that we're looking at is a seven point six million dollars. So we've had several meetings with S-BAC. We started in the fall last year. We started early, even before we got the governor's January budget, just because we knew that we were facing significant budget balancing solutions. So at our February twenty-sixth meeting, we proposed one point three million dollars. We reassessed that at our March twenty-sixth meeting and decided two hundred and eleven thousand dollars would no longer be applicable to be scored. So our revised phase one is one point one million dollars. And at February twenty-sixth, we actually brought phase two, two point seven million dollars. So we have a total of three point seven, three point eight, and we're actually just about halfway to our target. But we're currently working on phase three that we will be taking back to S-BAC, and I think we have close to a million dollars. So it's been a slow process, but we're getting to a point where we're, our goal is obviously the seven point six million dollars. And tonight's update is just to give you an idea of where we are in terms of meeting that target. Okay, and here are some of the strategies that we're employing. And we're not bringing, I'm not bringing the actual strategies on to S-BAC votes on them. I'm just giving an overview of where we are. So we've evaluated and removed approximately positions totaling half a million dollars. We have eliminated expenses covered in other funding sources, approximately a hundred and ten thousand. We have transferred seventy thousand dollars to other funding sources. And we've consolidated and reduced positions of about three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred. There'll be a presentation tonight on the March layoff notices. Some of them have been rescinded. But the ones that we are noticing, that we have included here, they have received March fifteenth letters, to the extent that they're filled. So that's the one point one million dollars in phase one. In phase two, we used three strategies, actually, two main strategies. We trued up program costs, and we made sure that allocations matched the true costs. That gave us about one point one million dollars. And then we looked at revenue, and this was actually the projected change in enrollment and ADA that we determined we would get about another one point six million dollars. So, and again, this will be brought back to the board in detail for voting after S-BAC actually votes on them. So to summarize, phases one and two total three point eight million dollars. Phase one included sixteen proposals, and some of the things that were included, we eliminated extra hours, we removed vacant TSA positions, as well as several other strategies. Phase two includes three proposals, and that mainly covered the impact of increased enrollment on revenue, which also impacts a transfer that we got, that we will get in from BSEP. So in terms of working with our superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, they received proposals in phases one and two, and we actually did a straw poll on March twenty-sixth just to see which proposals they were voting to move forward. So nine of the sixteen got a unanimous approval to move them forward to be voted on at a later date. Two got majority yes vote, so that's eleven so far. Three were removed from consideration, they needed additional information. And two received a no or needed additional information. So it's a pretty positive straw poll, and we'll be working to actually get these to a vote. Once they're voted on, we can bring them to the board for final approval. Next slide. This is just a summary of the next steps. We're gonna be, you will be receiving detailed proposals for your vote after S-BAC actually votes on them. We are compiling phase three, and we'll be presenting that at the next meeting. We're hopeful that we'll get over a million dollars there. And of course, our goal is to continue to use budget balancing strategies to ensure that we meet the entire seven point six million dollar target. So now I will take questions or any clarification needed.
Yes, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Falinsby. I'm sure we have a number of questions. I'll start. In terms of the block grant, I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. Despite the guidelines, is the recommendation that we don't apply to take the block grant or that we just are advised not to score it in our budget?
So it's not an application process? We're just advised not to score it in our budget at this time? And I know there's some literature or some concerns being shared, but like all our budgets, we rely on guidance from School Services, the DART Board, and the advice of Alameda County, who reviews our budget and who determines whether we have met their guidelines for them to accept it.
Okay, so it's just that we do not, that we're not scoring it with our budget?
We're not scoring it at this time, and we're gonna need to get more information.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I think it's significant as we talk about how much money we need to cut, knowing that potentially, there may be money down the line. But if the advice is not to score it for many reasons, then I can understand that. And when that information was shared with S-BAC, what was the response?
There wasn't, I think, there was some discussion, I think, at the last meeting, where some union members thought that, well, you know, they received some information that they thought it was more likely. I'm relying on the guidance from ACOE and School Services, which says it's just, there are too many unknowns on this time for us to even think about scoring it. And remember that this would be a one-time funding, and we're trying to find ongoing solutions, so.
Correct. And typically, in the past, it hasn't been our practice to budget and think about one-time funds for an ongoing general budget, and so.
Right, we have used one-time funds, but then we have to think about it the following year as a temporary solution.
That's right, that's correct, thank you. In addition to that, can you please go back to the roadmap page?
Oh, me? Liz, can you bring it up?
President Brown, while that's being brought up, I just wanted to add a point of clarification. The conversation regarding the block grant, there is different information, but the biggest difference in the information is not so much when we will get it or the likelihood of us getting it, but whether or not those funds will be discretionary or targeted in more specific and categorical ways. So I just wanted to add that piece of clarification.
And also, we think there may be a UPP component, and our UPP is thirty percent, so unduplicated pupil percentage. There.
Perfect, great, thank you. And in terms of the revisions, the reduction for the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, what were, specifically, were those revisions?
There were positions at sites that we thought we could score, but then based on the revised enrollment numbers, we determined that the positions that we thought could be offered up as a balanced budgeting solution would not be feasible. So we came up with a, we had come up with this number in February, but as we get updated information, and we got updated information by the March meeting, we would revise the amount that we had originally proposed. So it is a move, I mean, it is a moving target, literally. And we are making proposals and revising them and fine-tuning them as we're going along. So we got additional information that determined that one position that we're thinking of including would not be, would not actually count to us.
Towards the budget, okay, thank you. And then if you could go to the third to last slide, please. This one right here, oh, one more. Yep, this one right here. The three items that were removed for consideration from the S-BAC committee, what were those three items?
These were three positions that we thought needed additional, we needed additional information. So there were three positions that I think the unions asked us to pull from consideration. I mean, we'll be bringing it back, but they just weren't ready to, I think they needed more information before they could even vote to move it forward or not. So we'll be bringing it back to the next S-BAC.
Okay. And so then we'll either know after phase three, we'll know the results of that after phase three?
Right.
Okay, thank you, poor colleagues. Director Shinosky?
I have a couple of questions regarding the block grant. So we should understand something about the block grant and whether or not we're getting it when the state budget is finalized, correct?
Right, but that's gonna be in June.
I understand, I just wanna be sure. We do have a timeline for that. And then also, the TK add-on? So I just wanna be sure I understand what you said. I think what you said was that was about three million dollars in additional funding, but we're not including.
The block grant was three million, the TK was gonna be eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
Seven to eight hundred. And that was supposed to be a correction for something that they thought needed to be trued up in the state budget. But from early indicators, what they're seeing is that the amount that they're putting on, the six thousand, they think that was too much of a correction. So there's still a lot of unknowns about that eight hundred thousand that would impact our budget.
Okay, so we're talking about about four million dollars that we could see coming to the district that we're currently cutting to avoid, some of which may be ongoing and some of which may be one-time. So I am curious what our strategy will be, especially as we're talking about cuts to people, if those resources actually come to our district, and whether we're also planning for that. I understand the approach to be very fiscally conservative, but I also think that we need to be mindful of cuts being made that directly impact students in classrooms, after-school. of cuts being made that directly impact students in classrooms, after-school programs, and so on.
Right, so what our strategy has been in the past, we would have tiered proposals. So, the ones that we would do that are low-hanging fruit, like recognizing additional revenue, et cetera, eliminating vacant positions, that would be like in the tier 1 bracket. So, we used to present it like in $500,000 buckets or tranches. That would be, okay, if we get additional funding, the ones that we wouldn't cut would be like at the bottom, you know, like the last 500,000. But the ones, it would be like a tiered system.
I guess, let me say it in a different way. If, for example, I give a layoff notice to my good colleague Jen Korn, and then I have $4 million in additional resources 2 weeks later, I mean, how are we, you know, realistically planning our budget? I understand, like, we're not gonna cash any checks until we have those resources, but.
Right, so let me explain. So, Jen's rejection letter or laying off, any layoffs that impact people would be in like the last tier. So, to the extent that we get 3 million, then we wouldn't do the last 500. So, we would be like rescinding budget reductions, if you will.
So, let me say it in a different way, maybe?
So, I think that the challenge, Director Shonoski, is the scenarios that Assistant Superintendent Follinsby is giving is if we find out in advance that we're gonna get those dollars back. And of course, if we find out that we're gonna get some dollars, that tiered system will work. The problem is, and the challenge that we have this year that's unique, I would say, for this year, is that we don't anticipate knowing well enough in advance. So, if we talk about the budget timeline, typically around May 14th is the May revision. But we have to, of course, as you know, by May 15th let folks know, which means that prior to that, the board has to vote. And so, I'll let Sam chime in, but it would honestly, it would not even be rescinding because at that point, we could not rescind because of.
I understand that, so I'm saying, what is our strategy to utilize those resources?
It would have to be to repost positions and rehire, that would be the, and again, Sam, you can chime in, but there's no other way for us to do it. And then also be compliant with the law in terms of timeline for notifying employees.
But when we repost positions, do you recall back the people that were laid off first?
So, there's 2 pieces to it. One, we technically can rescind even after May 14th, but we, the people may not be there. But the other piece is that everybody who does get laid off gets put on what's called the 39-month rehire list, and they are automatically contacted before we can hire anybody external to see if they want the position.
Thank you, that's what I was asking about.
There's also a rehire list for certificated, but most certificated don't end up staying on that list.
Can you talk about the differentiation between the 39-month higher list, rehire list for classified versus certificated? There's a difference.
So, the biggest difference is that with the classified, if they get truly laid off, it actually gets extended another 2 years. So, they end up for 5 years being on the list that they can still come back to us. If we ever open up a position, they have complete rights to it. We cannot fill it without offering it to them. For the certificated, they end up on a list where they are our first call, based on our agreement with the union, that we contact them and see if they're still looking for a job and are interested. But we are also doing all of our efforts ahead of time to try to make sure that even if we are like switching their positions, that we're still trying to keep them aligned, but they don't get the extra 2 years.
Thank you for sharing that. It just feels, it feels frustrating and scary to do, especially when we may have the possibility of having this, despite the guidelines, having this funding from block grant. And I understand and respect the advisement to not score it. But what feels scarier than that is to go through this process with our employees.
But from early indications, the grants are gonna be limited. It's not gonna be a dollar amount per ADA, and it's not gonna be as unrestricted as they originally thought. So, there's gonna be some kind of caveat. So, if they came out and said, only schools with UPP over 50%, we would get 0, right? Or if they phased it in, we don't know how much it's gonna be, which is why we were fiscally advised by ACOE not to include. There are too many unknowns. And the same thing with the block grant. But as we get information, if we know that, if we get clarification that, yes, we are gonna get some funding that would obviously impact the target, which is what that slide was that I showed you. This is the target, and these are the things that are impacting the target.
Director Korn? Who is the decision-maker about the block grant? Is it CDE?
No, it's the state.
It's, but who in the state? Is it the state legislature?
It would, I'm not sure exactly who in the state, but the proposal came from the governor. And in terms of, he's gonna work with his fiscal advisory team to determine how is that money gonna be given to the schools.
Yes, I'm just wondering if there's any political pressure that could be applied to try to accelerate this process to give, all districts across California need this information sooner than June.
So, I would say that there's always space for that. But there's political pressure, the opportunity for that, not only to advance the notification when schools will know, but also to inform that it's discretionary, et cetera. Because again, that was the point of confusion. And that would make a significant difference if we're getting 3.8 million dollars discretionary. Then we can think about positions and programs, et cetera. But if we get 3.8 that is restricted funds, then we would only have to spend it those ways. And so, again, that is why it would be, and I'm fiscally not irresponsible to count money before you have it, but also to count money to be used in a certain way without having any idea if you can use it that way. And so, that's why we're trying to proceed with as much caution as possible in addition to the fact that we're advised not to score it. One thing I will add, though, is that as we're trying to get more information, one of the things that we have started to do, or will start to do with Sback, is to consider what would we do if we got 100% of it discretionary, if we got 50%, et cetera. So, we're also trying to play with scenarios with the hope that we'll get some, if not all, of the dollars.
Right, and then remember, this is a January proposal that we're working with. The governor also does a May revise. And the interesting thing about the timing is that we have to build our budgets based on the May revise. Because even for the '25, '26 budget, when we take it to the board for approval, the governor has not come out with a final budget as yet. So, that's why when he comes out with his final budget, if there are significant changes, we would do what's called a 45-day revise, which you're all familiar with.
Vice President Chang, Director Vasudev, did you have any questions? Okay, I just want to remind, thank you Assistant Superintendent Follinsby for your presentation, for the work during this very stormy weather, as well as your partnership and collaboration with the Sback Committee. I just want to remind the board about next steps. This is just an overall update about really the process and what, you know, our target is. But there are next steps that we will have to do. And I want to ask, in those next steps, we typically receive, in the past, we've received budget recommendations from the Sback Committee, but we've also received recommendations from other committees as well, specifically the PAC. We've received it from D-LAC in the past. And those have been presented to the board for our consideration. So, I was wondering if we are going to still follow that same process? And if so, when will we see them a part of a budget presentation?
So, those committees are actually in Sback. So, we've added PAC, we've added G-Shack, we've added, what is the other one? Anyway, so before, they were not included in Sback. But with our revised bylaws, they're now, but they now have representation in Sback. And their votes are now included as part of Sback.
And so, we'll just receive 1 recommendation from Sback that includes representatives from all of those specific committees instead of receiving the committee comments.
Correct.
Or committee recommendations.
Yeah, so what I'll be bringing back to the board will be, it's always 3 columns. So, we will say staff recommendations, Sback recommendations, and then we'll bring it to you for a board, for a final vote.
Okay. Can I just add 1 clarification to that? The board will be receiving specific recommendations from both PAC and D-LAC relative to the LCAP. And so, those recommendations will be shared with the board, and we're required to respond to those recommendations as it pertains to the LCAP.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We will now move on to our next and final presentation of the night, which is the update on reduction in workforce, specific to the March 15th notices. And so, I'll invite the superintendent to come now for that presentation. As well as Assistant Superintendent, Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke, and Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinosa.
Good afternoon, directors and members of the public, both here in person and online. We are cognizant of the time and are following up on the budget balancing update that you just received. Here to provide some clarification regarding the March 15th notices, specifically thinking about and responding to the resolutions that the board approved and received back in March 5th, Resolution 25025, 25026, as well as some other March 15th notices that were not necessarily publicly discussed in open session. Our hope is not only to provide clarification and updates on those notices, but also to share for some of those positions that were noticed, some rationale and implications, as well as to clarify next steps with the Board of Education. And so, just following up on the conversation that we just had, the timeline that schools usually engage in to develop and understand and confirm a budget is a timeline that starts in January with the governor's budget and then ends in July with the state budget enacted. And typically, as a Board of Education, not only in Berkeley, but in other districts as well, you vote, sorry, on the final budget late May or June. As you can anticipate, that is very late in last minutes to notify our educators, both classified and/or certificated, as well as those who are unrepresented, if they have a position in the district or not. And so, as a precaution, if you will, or a safeguard, there are laws in place that require that we notify employees of the potential of their position being reassigned, eliminated, or reduced prior in advance to the budget being approved later in June. And those are what are commonly referred to as March 15th notices or reduction in force. And so, again, our intent this evening is to provide an update on that. Sorry, just show your hand, President Brown. Sorry, thank you. So, you had heard Director Shonoski say earlier, something that we've referred to several times in our Sback Committee, is that about 80% of our budget here in BUSD pays for people, inclusive of programs, because our programs are ran by people. And so, when we think about our entirety, the entirety of our budget, we're talking about salary and benefits of about 80% of that total budget. There have been some questions around what percent of that budget pays for administrators. And so, on the slide, I'm sorry, on the pie chart to the right, you'll see a chart that's identifying the different certifications, if you will. So, classified and certificated employees, as well as administrators, both classified administrators and certificated administrators. And their salaries and benefits represent 12% of the entirety of the district's budget, with 5% being for classified administrators and 7% being for certificated administrators. That was just a piece of information that was requested, and so, sharing with you all in the public here today. But moving along, we wanted to first start with what are March 15th notices? Again, I started with the slide that showed you the timeline for budget development in the district and called out that March 15th notices were, in my opinion, intended to be perhaps a safeguard or a way to notify employees sooner than later. If you think about other industries, typically you get 2 weeks' notice, sometimes less than that, and maybe 30 days. And so, educators, both classified and certificated folks working in districts, get much more advanced notice. That is required by law for our certificated employees by California Ed. Code 44949, which says that no later than March 15th and before an employee is given notice by the governing board that his or her services will not be required, should we send them a notification? And so, that is why for a number of folks across districts, March 15th is a date that is known because we want to make sure they have notice. But addition to that, for our educators who are in Berkeley, our BUSD-BFT contractual agreement says that those who are in TSA or Teacher on Special Assignment positions shall have the right to return for 1 year only to the same school department that he/she held immediately preceding their special assignment. And so, every year, actually, it's not necessarily publicized, but every year, those folks who are considered Teachers on Special Assignment in Berkeley do get a letter of notification. And just for the sake of consistency, those notices go out meeting the deadline of March 15th as well. So, I want to distinguish that that is not legally required. It's something that we do just because it makes sense. If we're sending out information about potential for changes, we send them out for reassignments as well. Similarly, when we think about our certificated employees who are not necessarily teachers, but are administrators who are certificated, there is also Ed. Code that requires that they too, if they are in administrative or supervisory positions, get notification by March 15th, and that is by Ed. Code 44951. And then the same is true, only recently, actually, for our classified employees via Ed. Code 45117. Prior to that, I believe our classified employees only receive 60 days' notice. And so, again, the idea is to get ahead and give folks as much notice as possible. So, I wanted to just frame for you all that there is a legal requirement that these notices go out. It's not that we're trying to cause any upset or harm, but really trying to be honest about the fact that we won't approve or even know our final budget until very late in the game. And we think it's respectful for folks to know that and be able to make some decisions for themselves and their families should they need to. So, a quick summary on this slide. These notices are an attempt to protect employees, and they're a practice that is not unique to BUSD, but happens across all school districts as required by law. What these notices are not is they are not related to job performance. The vast majority of these notices are not. And we'll talk about some of the reasons or different types of notices in just a minute. There is one exception to this statement, and that is for employees that are being non-reelected, like most other industries. If there is an issue or an evaluation, evaluatory process that says an employee should not continue in that role, they might be non-reelected. And so, there are some, and in our case, a few, March 15 notices that meet this criteria. But the rest of the notices are not at all about job performance or evaluation. And these notices, though they are received on the same date and by law, they talk about potential layoff or change in job assignment, they are not a final notice. The final notice must be provided to the employee on or before May 15th. So, now we're gonna move on to the types of March 15th notices. You now understand the laws and the contractual agreements that require that we send out notices by this date, but there are different types. I'll start with the right-hand side. For our classified employees, actually, there is only 1 type of March 15th notice. And that notice is to notify the potential of a layoff, and that is for lack of work or lack of funds. I distinguish that from our certificated employees, which you'll see information about on the left-hand side. They have multiple types of notices for March 15th. One is that reassignment notice that I talked about, that is consistent with our BFT-BUSD contract. That is to notify them, not that they're gonna get laid off, not that they're gonna not have a job, but that they may be reassigned to a different position or a different place in the district. The vast majority of the certificated March 15 notices that we sent out this March were for reassignment. There's also March 15 notices that are temporary releases, and these are for credentialed staff who are on contract in a position. And when they became employees in BUSD, their contract had a start and end date. So, again, they get a March 15th notice. But these folks, in most, all cases, are aware that their contract will be ending by, at the end of the school year. We also have our probationary non-re elect, as well as layoffs. Layoffs, that is similar to the classified, and we call those PKS, Particular Kinds of Service. And they are based on credentialing, and they are linked, they have to be linked to service, I'm sorry, to funding. And for all of the certificated March 15 notices that we gave in the district, only about 22 of the folks who receive those notices are actual PKS layoffs for our certificated. Again, the majority of our certificated March 15 notices are around reassignment. Anything? This slide just talks to the notice selection procedure, and I'm going through this sort of quickly. You've talked about this in a number of settings and publicly as well. And I want to get to some of the specific positions that we've noticed in the rationale. But just want to call out, there is a notice selection procedure for classified. Again, it has to identify lack of funding and/or lack of work. It must connect to job classification. We have some job same. We have some job, there's some folks who have the same job description, but different locations or different departments. And that employees identified are based on seniority within that classification. Do you want to add anything to that? For our certificated staff, we identify particular areas of service based on funding, student need, compliance, et cetera. We connect it to specific credential areas and connect to job classifications. So again, the same job title, but might have a different location or title. And then employees identified are based on seniority as well within their credential and job classification. So not seniority altogether, seniority based on the group that you are in. The final thing we want to share before moving on to talk about specific positions is that some of these notices were sent also because positions are on what we call soft funding. When we think about soft funding, we are talking about funding sources that are not guaranteed in the next fiscal year. And they could be not guaranteed for a number of reasons. It could be that the funding source itself is dependent on a source that is finite or exhausted. This is an example of grants. We know we've received many grants after COVID, for example, and a lot of those dollars have dried up. And so if there were positions on those grants, then those positions were noticed. Because again, we don't want to be irresponsible and offer someone work if we don't know that we could pay for the work that they're going to do. Another example of soft funding is that the funding source is dependent on a decision or vote from parties external to BUSD. And I don't know that I like that I put that word "external" because examples of this are decisions of funding from our PTAs, our parent-teacher associations at school sites, or our school site councils. They, no way are they external to BUSD. They're very much a part of our family. However, the intent of that statement is to say that it is not decisions that we make here at the dais or that we make in our central offices, that the sites themselves decide if they are going to fund that particular position. Again, if they have the funds, if they still need the service, et cetera. And so that, again, is an example of soft funding.
It could also be donations that we get delivered to us that we are waiting for confirmation that we're going to get that donation.
Thank you. And then based on plans pending approval. And so sometimes, similar to the school site council or PTA, there might be some plans that have to be written and approved. And until those things are approved, we can, again, say that we have those funds and can go ahead and move forward with those positions. So those are some of the ideas of what soft funding is. And the reason why we want to call that out is because as we talk about specific positions, you will find that some of these folks were noticed because they are on soft funding, because they have a PTA-funded position, because they're, we're still waiting to see what their site's going to do with their BSEP discretionary funds, or because there's federal or state grants that are either expired or expiring. We need to find another source. The implication is that there are some of us who are waiting to get this confirmation. And to the question that Director Shonoski asks, as soon as we get confirmation of funding, of a funding source or continuation of a funding stream, then we are able to then rescind that particular position that is on that funding source, should that be the decision that is made. And then the other implication is that because the funding might dry up or a different decision might be made by those external, for lack of a better word, partners, then those positions might be reduced or eliminated.
Would you mind entertaining just some clarification questions before we get into specific positions? Is that okay? First of all, thank you so much for doing this because I think that it is providing some much-needed information to our community members, specifically our employees, who may have not known all of this information or may be kind of feeling like they're left in the dark. Do you mind going back two slides? Yeah, thank you so much. So I want to ask specifically about the certificated positions that fall under reassignment. So the resolution that we passed, which was from a couple of slides earlier, that the one that we talked about in closed session, had the vast majority of notices on there. But if the vast majority of certificated notices were reassignments, then why were they on the resolution, especially if they're not non-reelected?
So the reassignment for administrators, people who hold an administrative credential, are required to get a notice of reassignment specifically. It's its own piece of the Ed Code. And so they are, that was the resolution that you approved during closed session, was specifically about administrative positions. What didn't come to the board as part of a resolution was the TSAs, the Teachers on Special Assignment, because that's based purely on contract language, as well as the reassignment of the counselors, which was, we use the language on involuntary transfer from the contract to give them notice that they may get transferred to a different location within the district. And that's where that vast majority comes from, is the, I believe it's approximately 100... Yeah, I think it was 101, 102 notices that were to either TSAs or counselors about getting reassigned that were not a part of a resolution, because it was based on contract language instead.
Okay, that is helpful. And for, how, in the past, how would the public know this information if we didn't discuss it or vote on it during open session?
So the reassignments, we didn't do anything previously, in previous years, because of the fact that it's based on contract language. For administrators, it always would have been something that would have happened in closed session, based on the Ed Code. So for the Teachers on Special Assignment, there was never anything that came to the board, because they're keeping their job. They're just getting a different assignment, whether it's getting moved back to a classroom or a different TSA position. So it's not truly a layoff. It's simply, we're realigning where you're going to be working for the next year. And then the counselors were new this year, and the reason we added them was to give us the most flexibility in terms of being able to figure out how do we structure our counselors to best support our students.
And is the same thing true, not just for reassignments, but also for reduction in positions? Or is that completely different?
The reduction in positions is the PKS. And that one, we would come to the board. And we, last year was the first time in the last five years that we have come to the board. And last year, there was only one person on the PKS. And that was the teaching position that was lined with the Cooking and Gardening Program, which is, again, on the list, again, this time, due to the same soft funding issues, and figuring out whether or not we are going to continue having that. But that's, the PKS is the one that's the most similar to the classified side. And so we haven't done layoffs for teachers in that way, except for last year, we had one person, and that person ended up keeping their job.
But, okay, okay, thank you, that makes sense. Because I do remember us discussing that in open session last year, with the result being that the person ended up keeping their job. So thank you for sharing that. As it relates to process and types of notices, are there questions that folks have before we get to specific positions? Yeah, go ahead, Director Shonoski.
Just one quick question on this slide with the pie charts. I'm just wondering where the consultants that we hire fall into those categories? Are they part of services and operating expenses?
So they fall under 5,800 is the, is it the object code? 5,800, so they wouldn't show up here, because this is just looking at salary and benefits. So they would show up in a different part of the budget.
I'm talking about the pie, the left pie. So the left pie is the budget. And so of that full budget, I see certificated salaries, classified salaries, employee benefits, books and supplies, capital outlay, and direct and direct costs.
It would be in services and operating expenses.
Okay, so the 80% of the budget is people, is only the permanent employees of the district?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Director Shonoski, we do have and did not include in this deck, but we have definitely shared it with S-BAC both last year, both last year and this year, a list with all of our various types of contractors and how much. We can definitely provide that to the board in future.
Thank you, you've provided that in the past. I just didn't know where it fell within that chart, thanks.
So the last slide before we start to share some specific examples of positions is just a summary, again, of the, when and what resolutions came before the board on March 5. The total number of classified notices were 182. Again, the classified has that one type of notice, notification of potential layoff. And then the certificated notices are inclusive of reassignment and PKS. It was a total of 191 people. Wanted to distinguish people from FTE, which is full-time employment. And so it is, though it sounds strange, there is the possibility that four people make up one FTE or one full-time equivalent position. And so when you're talking about noticing lots of people, oftentimes it is, you know, not as many FTE. And you'll see that as we begin to share in the future slides. I wanted to call that out. And of that 182 and 191 that we noticed, that was noticing of employees across all bargaining units, including unrepresented employees as well. At the bottom of this slide, there is an FAQ regarding March 15 notices that we made some time ago and that we have shared. And then we also do staff updates, just so you all know, in our staff bulletin every, every often when we get it out, as well as videos we've been doing to explain this to our employees. And so this is not the only opportunity that they have to learn, though I do hope that they're listening. So in the slides that follow, we are prepared to share some of the rationale and the implications of various positions that were noticed, positions that, we're not going to talk about every position that was noticed. We can definitely come back or share information in another setting with you all, should you request. But we did try to identify positions and groups that have either come to the board in public session, that have come up in S-BAC either this year or last year, or have just been groups or positions that folks have asked us a lot of questions about. And we hope that in doing so, we not only provide some level of clarification, but also demonstrate the nuances that are involved when thinking about who gets a notice and if there's one person or an entire group of people. And so the first one, I'm going to now pass it to Sam, and then maybe Jill's going to chime in. We're going to talk about the Cooking and Gardening, and you did hear some public comments about wanting to make sure we keep our Cooking and Gardening educators at today's public comments.
So as you may be familiar from last year, we had a lot of discussions about our Cooking and Gardening program. They are funded mostly on grants. And so those positions are therefore on soft money. And so we have seen an increase in costs in the gardening and cooking program, and not an increase in the amount of revenue. So we are working on adjusting that to match, as well as we have some limitations within the grant funding that we're working on making sure that we're very clear about. We have gotten word from some of the grants that we can't use it to pay for certain positions, such as administrative or supervisor positions. The implications with this are to make sure that our program fits within the funding that's available. And we did that last year. These positions, all of them were on the list last year. The majority of them had a little minor reduction last year, but nobody lost a position within this group. And we're hoping that that will be a similar outcome this year. But again, we need to make sure that we have the money and so that we're able to match the funding with the expenses.
What you'll notice on the left side for many of these slides, where it says positions noted, we listed the, again, the FTE, not necessarily the amount of people, but also you'll notice that oftentimes these cross different bargaining units as well. Are there any questions about the Cooking and Gardening and the rationale? Again, the soft funding is the issue here, and being able to confirm funding while we're having rising costs and a decrease in revenues was the rationale for noticing the potential, yes?
Can you speak to timing and when we'll have clarity about the funding?
I don't know that we've...
There are a couple of grants, maybe not a couple. One that we're waiting to get confirmation on, but as we're putting that budget together, it's putting all of these pieces. How much money are we allowed to spend for certain pieces? And is that enough? Would we, would we need a general fund contribution, which we know is not likely, given that we're still trying to meet that $3 million target? And what are the options? So a lot of what we talk about are scenario planning, right? So scenario planning, A, all of the grant funds can meet the needs of the staff that we have for this program. Scenario fund, you know, scenario B is what would it look like if we had to make a 25% reduction? So that's part of the implication, is that we might need to reduce program to align with available funding. But the positive news is that we have funding to support some, not all of the programming at this point in time.
So another set of positions that have come up several times in our board meetings are the before and after-school program positions. The first thing we want to do for this particular slide is to clarify which positions in before and after-school were noticed. You've heard conversations about both specialists, as well as coordinators. Actually, for the March 15 notices, only the coordinators were noticed. And so we had 9.0 FTE for the after-school coordinators. Again, I'll let Sam and Jill talk about the rationale, but wanted to just call that out and was hoping more folks would be listening to that, because there was some confusion about that particular detail.
So the biggest piece is that, that keeps coming up in the conversation is that we are cutting the positions, which will then reduce the size of the program. And we want to be very clear that these positions that are on this layoff notice do not actually count towards the staffing ratio. So whether we have these positions or not does not determine the amount of kids that we can serve. And so we are looking at that as a factor in our decision-making in terms of making sure that we are able to serve as many students as possible. But we want to be very clear about that. The other piece is that, again, this is also another program where we are looking at matching the expenses and the funding and making sure that they work together. And so we are working on that. This is a program where we were very careful about who we noticed, partially because of the fact that we know we need every single person that helps us to serve the students, but also because of the fact that we do have contractors, and we're well aware of that. And we do not want to lay off our own people and have any idea of keeping contractors in those positions. The other piece is to make sure that we are following all the guidelines with the funding. The funds that support this include, like, ELOP and CARES and all of that. And so we have a bunch of other ideas that are also out there that we're working on and other structures. But these positions specifically, the reason they were put up here was to be able to reevaluate the process and look at these positions.
And I would also want to clarify, because I think one of the talking points has been around, don't cut the program or don't cut the funding. We don't have a general fund contribution to our before and after-school programming. These are entirely grant-funded, and most of those grants are also dependent on student demographics. So, you know, we have to understand the dollars that we're going to receive based on our current enrollment, and then we have to make sure that we have programming. But we have, we have programming at 12 sites currently. We're planning on having programming at 12 sites moving forward, but the staff, how we staff that is going to likely look different.
Thank you for that clarification. We have a couple of questions. My first is, in total, is 9.0 the total FTE that we have for after-school program site coordinators? Or is that just the positions that were noticed?
So that is the filled positions. We also have an additional three that are vacant.
Okay. And essentially, though, it could be a possibility that not all of the 9.0 FTE coordinated positions are, get the actual layoff. Is that correct?
That is possible, yes. We are looking at different options and solutions to this and how to restructure.
And how do we come up with that criteria?
So a piece of it is looking at what are the needs of the program? And what are, we're talking to other districts, looking at comparable districts to see how they structure their programs. I want to remind everybody also that these positions have only existed for two years. They were a design, a pilot, per se, to try to fix some issues that were going on in the after-school program. And so we're reevaluating that as well and seeing how can we best serve our students in the after-school program so that we do have a very strong and robust program moving forward.
Director Shonoski.
Yeah, a couple of questions I have. So I think that this is a perfect example of jobs that we really need to think about the position and not the people, even though there are people in these positions. And so it's really hard to do.
And so it's really hard to do. But that new structure, I think, was, has created a number of problems in, within different bargaining units and within the programs themselves. And so this one is just a really complicated one, but I know that the people in these positions are beloved people. And so that is really difficult here. I also wanted to just emphasize again, this is not going to change enrollment and that we continue as a board and as a district to try and see what we can do about actually increasing enrollment, increasing revenues, and making our after-care program more robust and more available to more families. So that, this is, I just want to emphasize again the statement that was made earlier, that those are separate issues here. Thanks.
Vice President Cheng.
Hi, thank you. Just following up on that as well. The, and I also want to reiterate that my understanding is there's no change in the enrollment. And I guess the second question related to that would be, while there's no change in enrollment across the 12 schools, would there be a change in the ratio between those who are enrolled and those who are giving them direct services in the before and after-care program?
So the ratio is actually written into the grants and the plan and how we get the funding, and so we can't change that ratio. We have to have a certain ratio to be able to continue to run the program. These positions do not impact that ratio. And so we have not noticed the positions that do because of the fact that we don't want to touch that ratio and continue to serve as many kids as we can.
I'm sorry, before you ask your next question, we do need to extend the time of the meeting because it's 10:58. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to extend by 10 minutes.
Girl, we need more than 10 minutes, I think. How about, we have the option to go up to 11:30, and if we don't use the time, that would be great. Can we do that?
To do so, 11:30.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Director Corn. All those in favor? I oppose. Extentions, the ice habit. Continue with your next question.
Sure, I'll be quick. So thank you, that's super helpful. I know there's a certain degree of anxiousness around this, and there's maybe perhaps some clarification that's helpful. So I think from the perspective of parents, and my kids were in the early and after-care for multiple years, and those really critical to our ability to go to work, particularly before the pandemic and before hybrid workspaces. If the ratio is not going to change with regard to students, to those providing the direct service, and there, it sounds like there potentially could be some structural change with the coordinator staffing or the coordinator oversight. What type of oversight do you envision in terms of maintaining whatever gains that were made with the two years, not experiment, but test or beta?
So we are looking into multiple different ways of structuring. And like I said, we're also looking at our neighboring districts to see how they have their structure to be able to determine what is the best way to move forward, to both include what we've learned in the last two years, as well as to make sure that we are doing something that's fiscally solvent for this program and can serve as many kids as possible. And when I say the ratio is not changing, it means we're not making it smaller. We don't want to make the program smaller. We want to make it so that we're able to serve as many students as possible. So we are looking into if there are solutions that would increase the amount of students we can serve. We are also, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that there is also a manager over this program, as well as a supervisor that's over the whole program district-wide. And so those positions are also in existence, and so that's a part of the larger discussion as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate the comments about the grant funding, and I want to reiterate that I hope we can look for ways to increase revenue. I know that there's some conversation about looking at our fee schedule. Great.
Yes, I'll say it in the microphone.
Say it in the microphone.
I mean, and we definitely, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate that our PTA collaborative folks have been in agreement that this is something that we should consider. We're looking at comparable districts to understand how other districts are doing that, to make sure that we're in that range. We have not increased our fees in a number of years, and we are definitely below the average, so we'll be bringing that forward to make that shift.
That's great. I've heard from many families who are willing to pay more in order to have access to quality childcare before and after school.
I think in our next budget balancing update, we will share more of the strategies and the ideas for generating revenues that we've been coming up with and working with Sback on. I did just want to just be really transparent and say that one thing that these notices allow is to the point that both superintendent has made is around kind of restructuring and rethinking. We definitely identified this, these coordinator positions to address a need. And again, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we wanted to study and see if the positions met the need. And so even if revenues increased, I just want to be really transparent that we still need to have that conversation. Did the positions do what we intended for them to do? And how do we make sure that what we need, or whatever that gap was, is still being addressed, while to the point that Sam made, serving as many students with quality programming for after-school as possible? So want to say that, and then want to echo what Director Shunaski said, but extend it to all of these positions, that every time we're talking about reductions or changes or even reassignment, it's about the position, not the people. We love our people, and we know that everyone loves people at the site, and that's what makes it really, really hard. But we try to think about it from the perspective of a systems lens and the positions as well. And so with that in mind, we're...
Can I ask one more question? I remain confused about the specialist position because we've gotten lots of emails about some of the specialists.
So there were three specialists who received letters because they may be bumped, mattering on different scenarios that happened. So they are not truly on the layoff list per se, but they got letters basically warning them that they could be bumped. But we do also have vacancies in specialist positions, so it's unlikely that any of them would be bumped out of those positions.
Can you explain what the scenario would be that would cause them to be bumped?
So if all nine of these site coordinators were not kept in their positions, some of them would come back down to specialist positions. There's also other, like, we have people who have moved from different positions all over the place in this district. And so there are some various different scenarios that might happen.
Great, that's very helpful. Thank you.
So another group that has come up a lot that also are amazing people doing great things for our students and families are our OFE staff. I was going to say what OFE stands for, but just Office of Family Engagement and Equity. So if you'll notice that on the left-hand side, we have a total of 14 FTE that were noticed for OFE. And again, we're going to pass this to Sam to give the rationale.
So again, these are, a lot of these positions are on different funding. So there's multiple funding sources within this 13, 14 positions. So there are some that are on one-time carryover funding, meaning that that funding has an end date at this point and doesn't exist for next school year. We do have some of these positions that are on unrestricted general fund, so we do need to evaluate whether that's what we want to use that for. And then we also have some that are site-funded and part of, like, BSEP site funds or PTA funding, things like that, that we also need to look at. And then I believe we also may have a position that's on a grant as well. So there are numerous different funding of these positions that we want to look at. And so we also agree that we want to make sure that we are providing family engagement, and equity is of course important. And so this is not a group that is unfortunately new to this process. This same group went through the same process last year, unfortunately. All of them were rescinded and got their jobs back, and hopefully we will have a similar outcome. But we do need to make sure that we are evaluating it and figuring out what is the best way to use our funding. And I will let Jill cover the implementation.
Great. So again, we have a whole goal in our LCAP on family engagement, and we know that we're all responsible for family engagement, the work that, you know, we do every day at the district office to engage with families, that principals and teachers do. But we also have specific positions that are called family engagement and equity specialists. So that work can happen in a number of different ways. There are still opportunities to achieve the actions that we've outlined in the LCAP, but the level of service, the span of those services might need to be adjusted if we have a reduction in funds. The board may recall that last spring, we came to the board to ask for approval to tap into the LCAP reserve. So that is definitely something that we're going to be considering bringing back to you as we're navigating the cost of services. So our supplemental funds in the LCAP are a definitive amount of money. And again, with increasing costs and not a commensurate increase in the revenue that we're receiving, we, the, we can't afford all of the actions that we have in the LCAP without looking at using that LCAP reserve. So we'll be back to you with more details about that.
Just for the purposes of folks who are listening and might not, I want to just remind us all about the Notice of Selection Process slide that we showed earlier. Again, because a lot of this is based on seniority and/or the possibility of bumping, even if we anticipate maybe changing or reducing a group or a position by one, we notice the entire group because we have to then understand, well, who's seniority, et cetera. And so again, just want to calm folks if they're seeing 14.0 FTE for family engagement, thinking that that means that all 14.0 might be laid off. Oftentimes, that is not the case, but we have to notice as many folks as possible because of all those little nuances that are oftentimes not known to the public. Another group, sorry. Another group that has been, come up a lot, you've heard some public comments around it this evening as well, are the middle and high school counselors. And so counselors were noticed, 10 FTE, and it was only middle and high school counselors. Before I let Sam and Jill share more information about the rationale and implications, I want to point out the asterisk here, that for our counselor positions, there are different types of counselors in BUSD. There are intervention counselors, academic counselors, program-specific counselors like Bridge and Puente. However, there's only one job title that says counselor, and they all have the same credential. And so again, similar to what I just referred to in the previous slide, we're not able to say, we might reduce the academic counselors and just notice those two people, let's say. We have to notice all the folks with the counselor title, even though we know there's some distinction to the type of counseling, for example, or the specifics of the counseling they provide. And so really want to again highlight that before Pauline, Pauline, before Sam and Jill share the rationale, which is going to be similar in pattern. But again, these have come up several times, we want to make sure folks understand.
Again, so this is a certificated group. And again, these positions are on soft funding. We identified that we had a group of about 15 FTE that were on soft funding, and through attrition, we reduced it down to being able to notice only 10. And so now we are looking at whether or not we have funding to not have to cut 10 positions, which is our goal, because we do know the value of counseling and all of that. And so we are looking at reevaluating the structure of the staffing and how we're delivering the services to students. And then there is also the possibility that some of these people may move to a different site, and these notices allow us to do that as well. And so that's a piece of this. And then for the implic, I keep adding an M, implications. I'll turn it over to Jill.
So again, the implications really are, you know, depending on where we have finalized funding, how do we align the staffing for those available resources? I think the other thing under consideration is, again, because we have different types of counselors, is us thinking about whether or not we can achieve, sort of, we can achieve the same level of service with rethinking those individual roles in a more broad, in a broad way. So there's been a lot of work that we've been doing to align and consolidate some of our services, you heard tonight with LCAP goal number three. So is there a different way for us to be thinking about that sort, you know, we'd love to have a counselor for every grade level at every school, but we don't have enough money to be able to do that. But if we're organizing and strengthening some of our infrastructures to support students, is there a different way for us to look at how those services are delivered with potentially a smaller number of counselors? But again, hoping to finalize some funding so that we can reduce that 10.
Now we're getting close to the 11:30 hour. No, is that an hour? Yeah. So the last one we had was, there was questions about, not necessarily here and these convenings, but in other convenings, about the 4.0 of educators, teachers from world language, specifically Spanish, and then art that were noticed, as they did not obviously fit in any of the rationale that we have provided for the previous groups. And so this is going to be Jill's favorite. You all might remember that we have recently completed our federal program monitoring, which is an audit of the district, and there were some findings from that audit that will better explain why we had to notice these positions.
Yes, so federal program monitoring, or FPM, is a process that's conducted by the California Department of Education. One of, we participated in a federal program monitoring review just last month, and one of the areas we were being reviewed in was for physical education. As part of that review, what was identified was that we are not currently meeting state requirements for the number of minutes that our students participate in physical education, which is, which is going to require us to ensure that our ninth graders are enrolled in physical education next year. Because we have to increase the sections of PE, that means that we're going to be reducing the number of sections in electives, and that's why we have the potential, we have the positions that have been noticed there. World language and arts are most of the electives that will have some of that flexibility to be able to address the state mandate of our physical education requirements.
No, he has a question.
So I kind of understand what you're referencing with regard to the 2.0 FTE in world language and Spanish and art with regard to what has to be done with ninth-grade PE. But I think I'm not totally making the connection. Can you explain that really rapidly for me again, just because it's late?
There are six periods in a school day, and there are core classes that students have to participate in. And up to this point in time, our ninth graders have had the, have had the option to select two electives. They are not going to be able to have two electives. One of those classes is going to need to be PE. So that means we need to reduce the number of those courses in order to increase the number of PE classes.
Great, thank you so much.
What you all have been waiting for, the last slide. Again, our goal was to provide some clarification, as well as some explanation for some of the positions you've been hearing about. We're happy to come back to share more and hopefully come back and share that we have already started rescinding notices as early as before spring break, and we continue to do so. And our goal is to figure out all of these conundrums, the soft funding, waiting for PTAs, et cetera, to give us information, and hoping the governor will send us something very soon so that we can rescind all or as many as possible. So wanted to share this last slide, showing that, again, before the break, we rescinded 45, specifically the school campus aides. Again, people are not the same as FTE, and so those 45 people equal 11.77 FTE. We've also rescinded a couple of the unrepresented and local 21 and UBA folks, and so we have a couple of those here on this slide. But again, our goal is to, we know that all of our people matter, and they help us do the amazing work that we do here in BUSD. And so as soon as we get information that allows us to ensure that we'll be able to pay their salary and their benefits, we will rescind as we go, and we'll provide you updates to that as well.
Thank you. And when do we anticipate that the next phase or round of rescinding letters or notices will go out to people? And if we don't know yet, that's okay.
Yeah, so we just sent out letters today to the newest ones that were on here. I am hoping that we may be able to identify some people either tomorrow or... I am hoping that we may be able to identify some people either tomorrow or next Tuesday to continue to supply more rescission notices as possible.
Thanks, I appreciate that. The more we can do further away from May 15, I'm sure it will do all the good for everyone involved.
We've been doing them kind of in real time. Like, as we know, we send them out, and that's how we want to keep them.
Absolutely. I appreciate that versus doing one big batch, letting people know as soon as you figure it out will relieve some stress, I'm sure, from people. Thank you all so much for your presentation. We'll move to the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the second opportunity for board member comments. Any board member comments?
I have a quick board member comment. It is about this presentation. I'll keep it really quick. Just that, as I understand that we're still making decisions to, like, consolidate positions, and there's a lot that's still TBD, but I would want our board and also the staff to center those decisions also on our, like, equity goals as a district, right? So when we think about, you know, bilingual OFE positions, right? Like, that's part of the reason why that position was called out in our Latinx resolution or counselors, right? Like, there's the counselors for Puente, that serve a unique need. And so I just want to make sure that we're holding our equity work, like, front and center as we're making some of those decisions to consolidate.
Yes, ma'am, and just want to remind you that this work is, it happens simultaneously with our budget balancing process, and that process has us rooted in our core values of resource allocation, and that first value is equity. And so the things that you just named, we're always asking ourselves if we are meeting those core values for every decision that we make and every discussion that we have.
Thank you. And at 11:18, our meeting is adjourned. Board members, if you could give me 30 seconds of your time to recess back to closed session to talk about one of the items that we already have agendized. 30 seconds, thank you.